Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. Our Durham Public Schools work session is now in session. And at this time, we wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is joining us this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about the work aligned with our mission to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and lead. The interpreters for tonight are Martha Romo Gilis and Vanessa Peña Ramirez. Thank you for taking the time to join us. At this time, I will pass it to our chair, Ms. Rogers.
Good evening, everyone. In honor of Black History Month, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. To acknowledge Black History Month, I wanted to share a quote from George Washington Carver, farmer, scientist, and inventor, and educator. How far you go in life depends on your being tender with the young, compassionate with the aged, sympathetic with the striving, and tolerant of the weak and strong, because someday in your life, you will have been all of these. The work of so many school districts seems like a common phenomenon, but the work in Durham is extraordinary. And with that comes critique. In response to similar public criticism, George Washington Carver was faced. His reply was, "When you do common things in life in an uncommon way, you will command the attention of the world." So let's remember that here in Durham Public Schools, we are doing things in an uncommon way.
Thank you, Chair Rogers. The next item on our agenda is a moment of silence. At this time, I invite us to reflect on the circumstances of those affected by violence, threats of violence, and loss of resources here and around the world, as well as our power and agency to continue to build connection, community, support, and vision for our children's futures. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Review and Approval.
Madam Chair, I would ask that we move Item 3A, the resolution for Dr. E. Livonia Allison, to above general public comment just after the Board of Education meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to move the resolution for Dr. E. Livonia Allison to under or above public comment and been seconded by Mr. Tab. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed use the same sign. It passes unanimously. And the next item on our agenda is the Board of Education meeting minutes from January 9th, 2025.
Move approval of the minutes from January 9th, 2025?
Second.
Okay, the meeting minutes have been, there's been a motion by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Tab. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed use the same sign. It passes unanimously. And with that, we will move to our resolution for Dr. E. Livonia Allison, and I will pass it, pass it to Board Member Tab.
Thank you very much, Board Member Chavez. It is such an honor to be able to recognize such a Durham legend, a Durham icon, who spent a lot of her time working here within Durham Public Schools, helping out children, being an advocate for all children. I got a chance to know Dr. Allison when I first came to Durham and started doing my student teaching at Hillside High School in 1984. And that's how long I've known her, since 1984. And she was very instrumental, instrumental in me taking the full-time job in 1987 with a lot of demands and stipulations of how things should, should, should go. And I'm just so honored to have, to have known her for as long as I have. It is my pleasure to bring to the podium in recognition also of Black History Month and the resolution for Dr. Allison Attorney Chair Floyd McKissick, who will give some background for her as being Chair of the Durham Committee on Affairs of Black People.
Thank you, Chair Rogers, members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent. It's a real privilege and honor to be with you this evening on this splendid occasion where we're recognizing the life and times, the work of Dr. Livonia Allison. She's somebody who virtually everybody in Durham knew. And I knew her from the time I was, my gosh, about sixth or eighth grade. In fact, it goes back to the time when this building was actually a school building and a voting precinct was operating in the basement of this building known as the Fuller School Precinct. And I can remember being out there on Election Day with a little tally where you would sit there and mark down how many people were coming. You'd go one, two, three, four, and you'd strike it with the fifth person, and you'd see how many people were turning out to vote. Even back in that day, that time, in that era, Dr. Allison was visible. Dr. Allison was moving around Durham. Dr. Allison was trying to make sure that progress in Durham was being made by electing the kind of leadership that we needed, not just here in this community, but across the state of North Carolina. She was a champion when it came to education. She was somebody who would, was in the forefront years ago in supporting the merger of the Durham school systems, Durham City School System, and the Durham County School System, understanding that that was in the best interest of this community in terms of providing access, equal access to the opportunities for every student in this community to achieve their greatest potential. She was somebody who didn't mind standing up and speaking out forcefully, aggressively, assertively for those things she believed in. She felt that suspensions weren't right in Durham County schools. She was going to come down here and let you know and say, "Guess what need to be done to address that issue?" And she felt that integrated testing was not the appropriate thing to do, and there were better mechanisms and tools and resources that are available. She was going to come down here and let you know what her thoughts were about integrated testing, or integrated grade testing, I should say. She was somebody who did not hesitate to say that when it comes to this community, we want to make sure that African-American students get the same access as all other students. She was concerned about disparities in performance. When it comes to education, she was forceful and aggressive. If I think back now, when she chaired that Education Committee for the Durham Committee, there was nobody with more courage, nobody who did their homework more, person who never missed a school board meeting. She was going to be here watching and observing like a hawk everything that you did. And if you didn't do something right, she was going to let you know. And she wanted to make sure that you voted right and voted the right way on issues. And her, that meant voting the right way because she told you to. But that was Dr. Allison. She was somebody that we all loved, somebody who we all respected, somebody who not only impacted education here in Durham, but across the state of North Carolina, and somebody who was known in Washington's, in the hallways of Congress, where she got up there and let everybody know where she stood, not just in education issues, but issues related to voting rights, issues that dealt with civil rights, a whole range of issues that she was passionate about. So with this beginning of Black History Month and thinking back about her contributions here in Durham, I thank you, I commend you, and I appreciate the fact that you are recognizing her for her contributions, for her legacy, but more importantly, for the very high standard that she has set, that we should all aspire to if we want to do just a little bit of what she did in contributing to this community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Chair Floyd McKissick. Thank you so very much. We'll now call to the podium her son, Dr. Vincent Allison. If you'll come to the podium, we'll now read the resolution into record.
Resolution of the Durham Board of Education honoring the life and legacy of Dr. E. Livonia Allison. Whereas Dr. E. Livonia Ingram Allison, a fearless advocate for civil rights, education, and community empowerment, dedicated her life to ensuring justice and equality for all with an unwavering concern for marginalized communities and?
Whereas born and raised in Durham, in Durham's historic Heta Community, salutatorian of her class, she excelled academically at the historic Hillside High School before earning her bachelor's with science and physical education from Hampton University, and her Master of Arts in Health and Physical Education and Doctorate in Higher Education Administration from New York University, using her wisdom to uplift future generations and?
Whereas Dr. Allison was a tireless champion for Durham Public Schools relentlessly advocating for educational equity and the fair treatment of all students and?
Whereas she was a staunch supporter of the performing arts at Hillside High School, advocating for the construction of a larger band suite to properly accommodate the size and legacy of the renowned Hillside Band, ensuring students had the space and resources necessary to uphold its tradition of excellence and?
Whereas as a dedicated educator for historically black colleges and universities, HBCUs, she mentored and empowered countless students, fostering academic excellence and leadership among young African-Americans and?
Whereas Dr. Allison's leadership as Chair of the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People for 14 years strengthened African-American political representation, ensuring that elected officials were accountable to the community and?
Whereas she was passionate about educating high school students on entrepreneurship, equipping them with the knowledge and skills to start their own businesses, and ensuring they understood the legacy of Durham's Black Wall Street so they could carry it forward for future generations and?
Whereas she was a staunch defender of voting rights, leading voter registration efforts, mentoring political leaders, and playing a key role in establishing a voting precinct in North Carolina Central University to ensure student access to the ballot and?
Whereas Dr. Allison was a bold and fearless voice in shaping public policy, serving as First Vice Chair of the Durham County Democratic Party and advising local and state leaders on issues of racial equity and justice and?
Whereas her contributions were recognized and celebrated by those who praised her lifelong dedication to justice and equality and?
Whereas Dr. Allison remained a mentor, advocate, and a force for change, attending regularly Durham School Board meetings, advising younger activists, and ensuring that the fight for justice continued beyond her own lifetime and?
Whereas on January 7th, 2025, at the age of 94, Dr. Allison's passing was a profound loss for the city of Durham and the nation. Her enduring legacy of courage, service, and advocacy remains a guiding force, inspiring future generations.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Durham Public Schools Board of Education, honor the extraordinary life and legacy of Dr. E. Livonia Allison, recognizing her unwavering commitment to education, civil rights, and social justice, and express our deepest gratitude for her, her immeasurable contributions to Durham and beyond.
Be it further resolved that this resolution be presented as a lasting testament to her impact, ensuring that her work, wisdom, and vision remain an enduring inspiration for the future Durham Public Schools scholars and leaders. Adopted this day, Thursday, February 6th, 2025.
I love, oh, do we want a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution for Dr. E. Livonia Allison to record.
I'll second.
The adoption of the resolution has been, has been moved by Mr. Tab and seconded by Ms. Umstead. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to add, when I was appointed to this board, Dr. Allison sat right over here in this corner, and she called me over and said, asked me a lot of questions, asked me what kind of education I had, but the last one was, "What are you going to do for black children?" And so every time I come into this room, I think about her asking me, "What are you going to do for black children?" You're right, she'll call you, and she'll tell you what she thinks, and is going to ask you some really tough questions. And I appreciate her and all she's done for this community and the leadership she's shown, and the reminder for me to make sure we're thinking about what we're going to do for children, and black children in particular. So thank y'all.
At this time, we'll have final remarks from her son, Dr.?
We'll take the vote. Let's, is there any further discussion on the vote, on the motion, rather? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say, use the same sign. It passes unanimously. And with that, I'll pass it back to Mr. Tab.
Thank you so very much. At this time, we'll have any words from her son, Dr. Vincent Allison.
I'm going to be very brief, because a lot has been said, and you've already really expressed how I feel about my mother. I want to thank the board on, on the resolution on behalf of my sister, who can be here tonight, Carrie Michelle Allison Davis, for her, Livonia Allison, or Dr. Allison, number one, which she used to always say after I got my degree, she was always number one. I happen to be Dr. Allison, number two, couldn't help it, but anyway, or her four grandchildren, Christopher Bryan, C.D., and Melissa. We want to thank you so much, anytime anyone, thank you so much. You know, when I first stepped here, I saw the time clock, and that's, I'm not sure if you saw me chuckle, but that's what brought back memories, because my mother, when she was at these meetings, she didn't, she didn't look at that clock. And invariably, I would get a phone call, "You better turn on the community channel, your momma's having a day." And I'll call, say, "Okay, she's speaking truth to power. That's her job." So hopefully, her legacy will live on. Hopefully, we can carry the torch. You know, my mother never did anything for accolades, honors, or awards. She truly loved this city, and she truly loved this community, and she truly felt that justice was deserved by everyone. So hopefully, we can move forward, keep her legacy alive, and keep doing things so we elevate the community of Durham and elevate our children in the Durham Public Schools and throughout the nation. So thank you again, I appreciate it so much. And I want to also, Floyd, I want to thank you for those generous comments that you made. You know, y'all went back and forth a lot, but, and you know, we all respected each other, but we can all speak the truth to each other. And I just want to make sure that we continue that, that we can have good dialogue so we work for the betterment of this community, the betterment of our children. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. That was an inspiring way to start the meeting, and we will, we will really try to... really try to feel Dr. Allison's spirit as we continue on tonight. Thank you so much for joining us, Mr. McKissick and Dr. Allison. All right, and Ms. Byer?
Yeah, just a moment to especially thank Mr. Tab for his leadership in drafting this resolution and bringing this forward to us this evening. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. All right, so now we will move to our general public comment. And I will read the public comment rules. Quick review of the rules, please state your name. If speaking for an organization, please state your name and the name of the organization. Second speakers are asked to present their comments in two minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have 30, you have 130 seconds left to start winding up your remarks. When the red light comes on, it will beep, which indicates your time is up. Complaints about named staff, students, or parents should not be voiced in open session. However, we are very interested in hearing your concerns with regard to public education, safety of students, or the operation of the school system. And finally, the board members will listen carefully and consider the comments, but we do not engage in discussion with speakers. And with that, I will call our first person, Chad Hafely. Of course, please pardon me if I mispronounce your name.
Hi, my name is Chad Hafely. I'm here as a parent of students at Hope Valley Elementary and Rogers Hur Middle School. Hi, it's me again. I came to your last two meetings to ask you not to implement express bus stops for Rogers Hur and other schools. In December, you approved express busing for some schools in the 25, 26 school year. It's now February, and this year's magnet lottery period has come and gone. There's still no information about how an express model will work. July will be here before we know it. Families need and deserve a concrete draft plan to react to. The transportation update slides on tonight's agenda don't even mention the express plan. My number one request is that you not implement express stops at all. It decreases equity and access, eliminates major reasons that families use school buses, and generally makes it harder for students to get to and from school. Responses to your community survey about the idea, we're almost universally against it. But if you ignore this and go with express stops anyway, tonight I'm asking you direct questions. I know you can't respond to me here, so I'll email them to you as well. These need to be addressed publicly and immediately. Where will the stops be? What times will they operate? What are the expectations of parents at pickup and drop off? What will DPS do to minimize the impact of express service on equity and access? And how are families with two working parents supposed to get their kids home? This is all basic information that we should have had weeks ago when the magnet lottery was still open. Without it, families couldn't make informed choices. If you can't answer these basic logistical questions by now, you shouldn't use the system at all. Implementing the express stops is the wrong choice. It's a permanent solution to a temporary driver shortage. Don't throw away the benefits from the growing together changes. Don't go into this without seriously evaluating the impact. I acknowledge the world is a lot right now, there's a lot of crises, there's a ton of fires to address, but please talk to families, involve us in the planning process. Don't forget that you made this decision come July. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Owens.
Good evening, and I want to say happy belated School Board Appreciation Month. I missed it last month, so happy belated. My name is Rachel Owens, and I teach science at Northern High School. I am also a member of DPS's Energy Advisory Council. I'm here with a group of students from across our district, along with students from Duke University. I will let them convey the bulk of our message this evening, but I just wanted to say how proud I am to be a part of this group of student advocates, activists, and leaders. I am here tonight to remind you that we are here to help, we are here to assist DPS staff in fulfilling a promise that you made in 2021, to move us toward a cleaner, greener future. Part of that promise, and stated in your resolution, is the goal of formulating a roadmap to this future in the form of a climate action plan. You have staff at the ready that are willing, able, and have experience in this very task, and we've even come bearing gifts. Our student leaders have provided you with drafts of a plan ready to go. Please hear them tonight. They are working hard to ensure that their future is safe and secure, as we know you are as well. We appreciate good intentions, but what we need is action, a climate action plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Owen Ambrose.
Good evening, my name is Owen Ambrose, and I'm a junior at DSA. My peers and I are all speaking on behalf of the Sunrise Movement. First of all, we would like to thank those of you who attended our visioning session in December. Last week, you all should have received an email with resolutions that we wrote with input from our community. If passed, these resolutions would make Durham Public Schools one of six districts across the nation to pass Green New Deal policy. It would make us a national leader in sustainability. The speeches you are about to hear from my peers and fellow members of the community will address eight of the items proposed in our resolution, all of which aim to prepare for and mitigate the consequences of our ongoing climate crisis. We hope to work with each of you to ensure the passage of these resolutions.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that into the mic. Thank you, and our next speaker is Andrea Bueno.
Hi, good evening, I want to thank each of you for taking the time to meet with us this afternoon. My name's Andrea Bueno, and I'm also a junior at Durham School of the Arts, but tonight I speak to you as an officer of DSA's National Honor Society and a representative of our student body. Not too long ago, I had the opportunity of visiting the new Northern High School. It's a lovely building, and as I looked around, I just got to imagine what the new DSA building would look like. I've seen tiles fall from the roofs, cracks expand on the walls, and faculty succumb to sick building syndrome, so I'm sure you can imagine my excitement at picturing the facility that future students will have access to in this new project. But as I looked into that project, one thing really stood out to me, and that was the lack of provisions for clean energy. We were made a promise of 80% clean and renewable energy by 2035 and 100% by 2050. Yet, the new building doesn't seem to really include provisions that work towards that goal. So, we're here to ask that the school board cease construction of new projects until they are able to implement programs specifically clean and renewable energy that will work towards that 80% goal. We understand that these are not simple asks, they take time, money, energy, and planning, but we hope that you will look past the words, what we're asking for, and really appreciate the opportunity we have to leave an impact in something much larger than any of us here. So, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aiden Mendoza.
Good evening, my name's Aiden Mendoza, and I'm a junior at Durham School of the Arts. The greenhouse gas protocol has defined carbon emissions using subset definitions known as scope 1, 2, and 3 emissions. What we think about when we think of these emissions and carbon footprint, usually just clean renewable energy, only cover scope 1. In order for the Durham Public Schools to become a green school district, we also need to reduce scope 2 emissions and direct emissions from a generation of purchased energy such as energy sourcing from Duke Energy and scope 3 emissions. All other indirect emissions that occur in the company's value chain, such as item purchasing and sourcing. I know this seems like a lot, and trust me, it is. The elimination of emissions at all levels is a daunting task, and that would require drastic systematic change. However, that doesn't mean we cannot start the process. Small steps now can help eliminate an addressable issue in the future, which is why we propose a complete, why we propose a complete, a comprehensive environmental assessment of all district facilities and operations to quantify Durham Public Schools' scope 1, 2, and 3 emissions and the risk that the climate crisis poses to our school system within one year of the passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cameron Aho.
Good evening, my name is Cameron Aho. I'm 17, and I'm a junior at Riverside High School. According to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, an estimated 5.13 million excess deaths per year globally are attributed to ambient air pollution from fossil fuels that could potentially be avoided by phasing them out. That means that 5.13 million people die per year because we don't utilize technologies that we already have. Hearing scientific statistics is one thing, and hearing about lost lives is another. I wonder how many disasters will it take before we act? How many lives need to be lost before we act? How many times are we going to let this pass before we act? I'm not alone in this opinion. The Sunrise Hub at DSA has been asking the same question. They have been acting, attempting to make a difference. This Tuesday, 45 students at Riverside High School agreed and pledged to act. We started our own hub, another group committed to acting. Next, I need you to act. We refuse to sit idle, and I believe that we can make a difference. I believe we don't have to sit here watching people suffer. I believe we can act, and I believe in this resolution. I believe that the school board's action will help. I believe in this step, and because of that, I believe that the school board must create a plan to achieve 100% clean energy by 2030 and 100% carbon neutrality by 2040, district-wide without the purchase of carbon credits or offsets within 18 months, excuse me, of the passage of this resolution. Please act. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Blackwelder.
Good evening, my name is Elena Blackwelder, and I am a teacher at DSA, and I also supervise the Sunrise Hub there. And it's easy to dismiss climate change as something that will become a problem in 20 years, or to say that wildfires don't happen here, floods aren't really that bad here, or we don't really get bad hurricanes in this area. But that last one is what people living in Asheville, North Carolina said before September of last year. Asheville was considered a safe haven for climate change because of its unique position in the mountains, but on September 27th, 2024, Hurricane Helene devastated western North Carolina with floods washing away whole towns, destroying roads, and killing more than 100 people. Climate change is causing more natural disasters at higher intensities and in different places. Durham could experience a climate disaster like Helene, and we would not be prepared. Durham Public Schools currently does not have a climate disaster plan. In the case of an unexpected natural disaster, our schools should be equipped to distribute resources such as first aid, clean drinking water, warming and cooling centers, and electricity. That is why we ask DPS to work with local and state governments, nonprofit organizations, business leaders, students, teachers, and parents to create a comprehensive district-wide climate disaster plan. Within 18 months of the passage of this resolution, which establishes steps to mitigate the risks of the climate crisis, that the current climate crisis poses to our school system, and in the event of a climate disaster, use schools as centers for community response and relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kayla Cabrera.
Good evening, my name is Kayla Cabrera, and I am the Student Body President of Durham School of the Arts. As the climate crisis becomes increasingly prevalent for our futures, we need students to be educated on how to best combat the issue, encouraged to advocate for environmental justice, and prepared to enter careers that help mitigate the effects of climate change. I have learned from a curriculum with a focus on climate change, and even then, I was only gaining a surface-level understanding of the truly detrimental state of our world and the continuous systematic climate oppression from our governments and corruptions that they intentionally attempt to hide. Not only this, but climate change is rarely discussed outside our science classrooms despite its prevalence in other subjects as it embodies societal issues like systematic racism and economic inequality. The poor climate actions of past generations leave this crisis, and the responsibility to solve it in our hands. But we can't begin this fight if we aren't provided the necessary education and resources, and it is your responsibility as leaders in education to provide them. We need the school board to establish a committee inclusive of students, teachers, and local climate experts to write place-based standards incorporating climate literacy into curricula across all grade levels and subjects. Audit all science textbooks for inaccuracies and inadequacies relating to the reality causes severity and solutions to anthropogenic global climate change, and study opportunities for high-quality professional development for all district faculty relating to climate literacy. This committee will provide a proposal on implementing these standards to the board within two years of the passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Sarah O'Brien. I live in Durham, and I have two children at Durham Public School System. I work in the field of transportation and specifically bicycle and pedestrian planning, engineering, and safety. And in the 20-plus years I've been in this work, I've seen more and more agencies seek out planners and engineers with experience specifically in bicycle and pedestrian transportation as local state, local and state governments create full-time positions to address the unique needs of these modes, positions that largely did not exist 30 to 40 years ago. This is just one example of the types of jobs that are likely to continue to be in demand as our country shifts away from a car-centric culture, which is just one strategy to address climate change and its devastating impacts within the transportation sector alone. Durham Public Schools needs to provide students with the resources to find jobs that are based on combating climate crisis, especially in those fields that become more in demand. Our children need to be prepared to take on the challenges that my and previous generations are passing on to them to solve. DPS needs to engage with and listen to what employers are saying they need from prospective employees to build a competitive workforce. Therefore, please support Sunrise's resolution to partner with local and state governments, businesses, nonprofit organizations, unions, and trade technical schools to expand pathways to well-paying jobs combating the climate crisis in career technical offerings. DPS must rise to meet these needs to ensure this generation is well-equipped to battle the climate crisis.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alois Egger. Sorry, Alois.
Hi, my name is Alois, and I'm a student at Riverside High School, which recently started a club following DSA's footsteps of the Sunrise Movement. As stated in the proposed resolution, the climate crisis is increasing the cost of food, disrupting hourly and seasonal employment, unemployment, oh yeah, employment, and increasing unemployment overall, which will, sorry, which will exacerbate childhood food insecurity, especially among low-income families and communities of color. As the climate crisis worsens, it becomes increasingly crucial for the DPS system to step in. We are so grateful that the kids in DPS are now offered free breakfast and lunch, but our work cannot stop there. We must ensure that this policy remains implemented despite setbacks. We must strive to improve the quality and sourcing of our meals, and we must do so for the sake of increasing nutritional value and decreasing scope 2 emissions. This is why, as the seventh action item listed in the Green New Deal for Durham Public Schools, we ask TPS to continue to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students. Within three years of the passage of this resolution, adopt a plan to provide locally-sourced and sustainably grown breakfasts and lunches to all students. We know our demands are steep, but they're demands because they are necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rodriguez, and I am one of the leaders of the DSA Sunrise Hub. In the current Durham Public Schools strategic plan for 2023 to 2028, these five items are listed as priorities for goal-oriented improvements. Fostering academic excellence, recruiting, supporting, and retaining exemplary staff, providing a safe and healthy school environment that supports the whole child, cultivating meaningful and authentic community engagement, and conducting business, administrative, and operational functions responsibly and equitably. We believe that these ideals directly align with the ideals and propositions of a Green New Deal for schools. Responsible operations function, responsible operational functions include the reduction of scope 1, 2, and 3 emissions. Part of providing a safe and healthy school environment is ensuring the cleanliness of buildings and the nutritious value of meals. Part of retaining staff is a similar promise, ensuring that their place of work is safe and secure. Part of cultivating community engagement is connecting students to green jobs in their community, and part of promoting the academic excellence of our students is ensuring that they are well-versed they are well-versed in the dangers of the climate crisis and equipped with strategies and practices to face them. Some of the current goals in the strategic plan lean towards these green initiatives, but we need more. We are aware that amending the strategic plan is a tedious process, and most of our demands are not appropriate for a plan only spanning over the next three years. This is why we resolve that Durham Public Schools should start by incorporating climate change mitigation, adaptation, and disaster response in the annual superintendent evaluation beginning this year with the larger aim of implementing such goals into the 2029-2034 DPS Strategic Plan. We believe that we are working with the same purpose, to fight for a safe and bright future for DPS students, and we believe that in the face of the climate crisis, one of the largest issues humanity has ever faced, a Green New Deal is necessary for that promise for such futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lucia Harrington.
Hello, my name is Lucia Harrington. I'm a junior at DSA and a member of the Sunrise Movement. Thank you for all you do for our schools, and thank you for listening to my peers and fellow community members. Students in our school district are calling on this school board to take climate action. We need to transition to renewable energy. We need a climate mitigation plan. We need to teach students about the climate crisis and prepare them for future careers. Before the next hurricane hits, before the L.A. fires become our own, before heatwaves force children inside for the summer permanently, before snow days lose their magic and instead become something to fear, we have four years left to reduce emissions before higher global temperatures make the worst climate impacts inevitable. We know it will be difficult, but a Green New Deal for schools would be monumental for DPS. We appreciate good intentions, but what we need is action, a climate action plan, a Green New Deal for schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlotte Curlin.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Curlin, and I lead a team at Duke University's Climate Coalition focused on expanding renewable energy initiatives, specifically solar energy, in North Carolina. I want to thank you for your time and for your ongoing commitment to a sustainable future for Durham Public Schools. When I spoke to you last, we discussed the importance of creating a climate action plan that integrates renewable energy across the district. Since then, I've been inspired by the continued passion from students, educators, and community members alike. But as we know, we need more than passion, we need action. I look forward to having open conversations about a realistic route of implementation for a climate action plan. This is an opportunity to integrate clean energy into our schools, reduce our carbon footprint, and most importantly, provide our students with hands-on learning experiences that will shape them into the climate leaders of tomorrow. At the Duke Climate Coalition, we are committed to helping make this vision a reality. I stand here tonight to reiterate that we are ready to assist with research, analyzing economic benefits, and navigating the logistics of implementing a district-wide renewable energy program. This work is not just about energy, it's about the future we want to create together for Durham and the generations that will follow mine. We appreciate good intentions, but what, but what we need is action, a climate action plan. I'm excited to see the progress that we can make together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fisher Malin.
Hello, I am Fisher Malin. I am also a student at Duke University with the Duke Climate Coalition. I want to first start off by saying another belated school board appreciation month, and I am speaking to encourage Durham Public Schools to implement and execute an action plan to achieve the renewable energy targets that is called for in the 2021 Clean Energy Resolution. And a lot of the students who have spoken so far have already done an excellent job highlighting why this work is important, why climate change is scary, and why it's real and why it's happening right now. So I wanted to highlight a few reasons why this work is particularly feasible. And I think that the, the case for this is clear. To start, the commitment is already in place with the 2021 Clean Energy Resolution. Energy managers have already been hired, and they have technical expertise to do this kind of work. The financials are compelling. This is fortunately an area where improvement can pay for itself and does pay for itself. So by prioritizing renewable resources and energy efficiency, we can improve student health, minimize greenhouse gas emissions, all while saving money. And then there are resources to support this work. There is money from federal and state governments, nonprofits, and the private sector to fund a lot of this renewable energy and energy efficiency work. And finally, there is an eager coalition of students and staff and teachers that would be happy to provide support and work in collaboration to make progress on making a plan to achieve those renewable energy targets. Therefore, I hope we can be in conversation about how to work together and make this happen, and as always, we appreciate good intentions, but what we need is action, a climate action plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristi Clem.
Hello, I'm Kristi Clem, physical therapist, um, member of DAE, and I sent the board and several administrators an email over the weekend asking things I've asked in public comment. Would like to find out if legacy pay can legally be removed from classified paychecks. Not if you want to, but are you allowed to? Classified employees are definitely fearful that that's going to disappear in the future as a way to, um, figure out this shortfall that was not the employee's fault. We want to know how the eight-point-eight for classified was actually spent, and we would like a list of positions, what the previous pay grades were called compared to what they are now, so we can continue to look at specific numbers to see what is happening. Ms. Byer wrote me that she's confident administrator will answer my email. She has way more confidence than I do because historically, my emails go unanswered. Mr. Teeter said, uh, last board meeting, that he would be willing to look at, uh, pay scales going forward if that's something that he has asked to do by the board administration. I would love to have a commitment that that is going to happen. You know, the last two years, I believe the state has mandated a four percent and a three percent raise for classified, so at the very least, if you throw out the Hill Study, at the very least, it seems like classified folks should have a seven percent raise. But yet, when we look at current pay scales, that's not the case. For my grade, OTPT, the max rate now is eight percent less than it was in twenty-two, twenty-three. The state has said we should get a seven percent for two years, um, over the last two years, and we're now down minus eight. I don't understand that math. Also, DPS needs meet and confer, a real meet and confer, not a let's invite anybody that wants to come, but one that has a majority representation in that. Um, I think y'all have gotten a letter from multiple attorneys that that is legal. Am I out of two minutes?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Jennifer Girish.
Hello, hi, how are you? I'm no stranger to the board. My name is Jennifer Girish. I'm a behavioral scientist and health systems researcher. I'm here, though, in the capacity of the Durham Advocates for Exceptional Children Committee on Suspension. We're so excited that a strategic priority two-B is on the agenda. We're eager to hear the update tonight. I have four and a half pages of things that I wanted to say to you all. I've also emailed it. Uh, my, my co-chair also emailed all those to you. There's some really great questions that we hope that you ask tonight, um, especially about the way the data are represented and the planned solutions that are there, and potentially how we can use data better to, to target solutions by our self-proclaimed data geek of a superintendent, uh, Dr. Lewis, who we've had the opportunity to collaborate deeply with, and we're so very, very thankful and grateful for the time that you've given us. I wanted to start with saying that public schools are the only place where students with disabilities are guaranteed full and equal access to education. In fact, we want to recognize that here, particularly in light of the forces that are pushing against ending public school. Let's all be clear, there are forces trying to push to end public school. My children and other people's children with disabilities will have no place to get a proper education if this happens. However, we need to do our part right now to protect the children that we have in school to make sure that their butts are in the school system. We so appreciate you adding students with disabilities to priority two-B. We need to do more. The data you see tonight will show you, we went from number two overall suspended group to woo-hoo, the most suspended group in the data that they're going to show you tonight. That's super not cool and nothing for us to be proud of. And also, as I've brought up to you multiple people in this group, I'm not so sure I believe those data. I'm not so sure that we're tracking it as effectively as we could, and I know you can talk to many.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for the information and presenting it to us. We had someone else sign up named Sarah O'Brien, but a Sarah O'Brien spoke. Is that a different Sarah O'Brien? Oh, okay, all right. In that case, that concludes our public comment. And the next item is our consent items. Just let me say thank you to everyone who spoke, and we love to hear from our students. Really means a lot. All right, consent items.
Move approval of the consent agenda, items A through E. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Carter-Autton, seconded by Ms. Byer. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, use the same sign. And passes unanimously. And now we will move to academic services and begin with a CTE proclamation. So I will hand it to Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Board Chair Rogers, members of the board, Superintendent Lewis, district leaders, and community stakeholders. Today's cutting-edge, rigorous, and relevant CTE program prepares youth for high-wage, high-skill, and high-demand careers in established and emerging industries. CTE Month is a public awareness campaign sponsored by the Association for Career and Technical Education that takes place each February to celebrate the value of CTE and the achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across the country. Throughout the month of February, our CTE program will celebrate and promote the CTE programs in our schools and potential careers in Durham and across the U.S. Over the last year, we've done some exciting work in CTE. We welcomed all eighth graders to our second Accelerate Career Event, where middle school students engage with employers to see what career options are available here in Durham County. We started the process of redesigning how middle school students engage with the CTE content with the implementation of our career and college-ready labs, and we increased the number of students participating in work-based learning experiences throughout our different programs. I want to thank our CTE educators and support staff for the tremendous work they are doing to provide career opportunities for the students in Durham Public Schools. And tonight, the CTE Department is excited to put before you a proclamation declaring February first through the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, CTE Month in Durham Public Schools. I want to personally thank you on behalf of our teachers and staff for your continued support of CTE in our schools, and at this time, I invite you to read the proclamation aloud.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris, and I will invite Mr. Tab to start, and we'll go down the line here to read the proclamation.
Whereas February the first through the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five has been designated as Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education and?
Whereas Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness and?
Whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement and?
Whereas Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways and?
Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, skilled trades, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology and?
Whereas Career and Technical Education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials and?
Whereas Career and Technical Education programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong and competitive economy.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Durham Public Schools Board of Education does hereby proclaim February first through twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five as Career and Technical Education Month.
And urge all students and families to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Career and Technical Education Programs in Durham Public Schools, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Signed, signed the sixth day of February, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, board colleagues. At this time, I will accept the motion.
Move approval of the proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month?
Second.
Thank you. The, um, approval of the proclamation has been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Tab. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, use the same sign. All right, and with that, the proclamation is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris, Dr. Pittman.
Thank you.
All right, and our next item is our strategic plan priority number two, and I will pass it to Dr. Pittman.
Thank you, and good evening, board members, Superintendent Lewis, members of our community. This evening, we are pleased to provide an update on the strategic plan priority number two, provide a safe and healthy school environment that supports the whole child. I would like to acknowledge my colleague, Dr. Tanya Giovanni, our Deputy Superintendent of Administrative Legal and Compliance Services, who co-chairs the priority leadership with me. On the next slide, please. This is our, just a quick refresher of our mission, our vision, and our core beliefs around educating, empowering, and embracing every student to innovate, serve, and lead, as well as our vision to ignite the limitless potential and our core beliefs for all children. Tonight, throughout our presentation of priority two, you will hear evidences woven throughout that lift up all of these. Next slide, please. So tonight is about priority two, the second of five, and before we begin, we want to do a little bit of a refresher on where we ended last year, and there's a new launch of a document called the Benchmark Summary Quick Reference on our next slide. And this summarizes where we were at the conclusion of our first year. Next slide, please. There we go. Where we were last year. This data has been shared with the board, but this is a more at-a-glance and in-depth look at priority two. What I'd like to do is talk briefly through each one, just to dust off our cobwebs before we jump into the actual update from our strategic plan goal leads. So as you can see, priority two has four goals, and what's going to be interesting about this, goal one, although on one single line, really has three goals, metrics embedded within it. It speaks to the goal from last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, to spend time developing measures of fidelity, and measures of fidelity in two areas, one around our cultural frameworks, and the second around our social-emotional curriculum. So last year, this goal- So last year, this goal team spent time developing those measures of fidelity. And for the next four years, they'll be implementing those measures against the curriculum and the social and the cultural frameworks. So you will see a metric now lifted up at 88%, which is their baseline this year, that 88% of schools this year at least will have measures of fidelity with their implementation in each of those two areas. And then over the course of the next four years, will reach 100%. For Goal Two B, the percent of Black students, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students over the next four years would be 5% or lower. Just want to remind the board that in September of this year of 2024, you approved into this goal metric the students with disability suspension rate. So we won't see a data point benchmark that had been reported last year, but will be going forward. Just to call attention to the the results, the Hispanic suspension rate is still under that threshold of that 5% target of 5% or less, but did creep up by .67 last year. So that's on the radar of our schools and our leadership teams. And the goal is not met for our Black students. For Goal Two C, the target of 95% attendance or higher in four years. The benchmark was set at 89.2 and was met. And then for Goal Two D, this one is a little bit complicated. It has four data points within the one box. And it speaks to two surveys. One, we're going to be looking at participation rates in each of those two surveys. And the survey would be the Student Climate Survey, which is administered to grades five, seven, and 11. And the other is our Panorama SEL or Social Emotional Learning Survey. Again, seeking 95% participation. If you look carefully at that metric for participation rates of 84% for the climate, you'll remember, you may remember back in the fall, 9% of our students responded. And you remember with the Parents Bill of Rights, it's an opt-in survey now. And that metric has brought some complexities to managing that, and the team will speak to that more, a little bit more in-depth this evening. And the SEL curriculum, we had set a benchmark of 86.5 and 68% participation rate on that was was the accomplishment at the end of this year. For each of those surveys now, we look at, well, what are the students telling us? For Student Climate, that we want to see that schools are reporting my school as is a good place to attend and to learn. And you can see, we increased that. Our benchmark was 87.3 and we got to 88.7. We would celebrate that, but we must overlay the percent of participation, where 9%, 9.7% of our students responded to that. And so we look again to our social-emotional survey, where overall students feel that they belong at their school. And we had set a benchmark of 61. And we did not meet that benchmark, but rather 52% of our students reported favorably in that regard. So let's talk about what's happening on the next slide. Here are the four goals. Quickly, just as a refresher, let me just set the stage of what will happen with each of our goal presentations. So we have four goals and four goal team leads and co-leads. Each of their presentations will be two slides. The first will will refresh you with the goal and show you their team membership. And the second will highlight what is in progress, what's in place, and what are the next steps. There is a lot of information on those slides, and the the teams have lifted just select pieces that are in bold that they are going to speak more in-depth intentionally to with you this evening. Each of the goal team leads will also highlight the work underway, including their successes, whether they're on track to meet their benchmark target, some of the challenges that they're facing, and some of the ways that they are addressing those challenges. So at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Louverne Maddox Perry, our Senior Executive Director of Student Support Services, to lead the information on Goal Two A.
Thank you, Dr. Pittman, and good evening, Dr. Lewis, Madam Chair Rogers, board members, and community members. Next slide, please. By 2024, DPS will develop measures of fidelity for implementation of a research-based cultural framework and social-emotional learning curriculum. By 2028, 100% of Durham Public Schools will implement a research-based cultural framework and social-emotional learning curriculum with fidelity. Just wanted to refresh what the goal actually states. At this time, I'd like to ask the Goal Two A team to stand. Thank you. And we're excited to begin our update of Priority Two with Goal Two A. Next slide, please. In place, in progress, and next steps. Goal Two A is focused on the foundation of all the work towards attainment of each of the other Priority Two goals. High-fidelity implementation of cultural frameworks, namely restorative practices and capturing kids' hearts, as well as the embedding of SEL curriculum into all DPS school schedules is the base for building a safe environment for all students. The efforts our team, including the principal advisory members, continues to take in conjunction with the DPS community are towards fostering holistic wellness system-wide. The collaboration with Leadership Services on an aligned tiered support model allows schools to receive personalized support, professional learning, and coaching based on their specific level of implementation. The use of a restorative practices checklist, as well as the SEL implementation rubric, helps guide the honest conversations and discussions about ways to move the needle. Two noteworthy endeavors with local partners are, number one, with the Center for Child and Family Health. Now, we have a plan to train all DPS relevant staff members in trauma-informed practices that includes follow-up sessions with the school administrators throughout the school year. And secondly, in partnership with Peaceful Schools, we will focus our restorative practices training with them for administrators around fair process and how to be restorative in the face of having to issue disciplinary consequences. These highlights will ensure we build our implementation each year towards the 100% by 2028 by increasing the DPS team's capacity for cultural frameworks and SEL curriculum. Next slide, please. We are on pace for Goal Two A to achieve the benchmark for 2024 and 2025. However, there are challenges that we have taken proactive steps to address. For one, time remains a commodity in educational systems and is the only non-renewable resource for us as educators. Time for training and adequate support for school staff remains a continual challenge. Another prominent challenge is the creativity required to avoid initiative fatigue. With all the needs in our district, we are fortunate to have programmatic resources available to address some of these needs. It is through skillful collaboration and active listening that we are hoping to adjust as necessary to avoid overwhelming school staff with the new thing. Full SEL implementation requires lessons to be taught by classroom teachers for a specific amount of time, 15 minutes a day in elementary schools and 45 minutes a day, excuse me, a week in secondary schools. We need continued alignment with our partners in curriculum and instruction, as well as research and accountability to ensure that schools and teachers can prioritize SEL instruction and that schools do not receive competing messages about allocation of instructional time. At this time, I would ask Dr. Melissa Watson to come speak on Goal Two B.
Will you go back one side, please? Thank you very much. Good evening. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening. DPS focuses on the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of every scholar by helping schools create safe, respectful, and inclusive environments. We integrate social-emotional learning, mental health resources, and restorative practices to meet the holistic needs of our scholars, ensuring they feel valued and supported. In addition, we now use data about students with disabilities as a metric for this goal. This revision was made in September 2024. Will members of Goal Team Two B who are present, please stand? Next slide, please. We, as a district, have made a commitment, and I want to highlight just a few of the practices that you see on the on the slide here. In place, for instance. To build upon a welcoming school climate within our schools, several provide affinity spaces for scholars of color in LGBTQIA+, offering positive, culturally-affirming experiences. School staff receive training on updated guidelines and strategies to create inclusive and supportive environments. In addition, staff receive professional learning on evidence-based practices to enhance scholar behavior. And all EC staff and school administrators are required to undergo training in non-violent crisis intervention to effectively prevent and respond to challenging behaviors. Schools are encouraged to send teams to participate in this training, ensuring that diverse staff members are prepared to respond and provide support as needed. In progress. Another strategy for reducing recidivism at New Directions, our Alternative Two Suspension Site, involves engaging scholars in a leadership series facilitated by appointed to lead. Leadership skill development empowers scholars to take ownership of their actions and make positive choices. Next steps. In alignment with the DPS Board's decision to revise DPS Policy 4301, Goal Team Two B will gather feedback from scholars, staff, and families to ensure that the revised DPS Code of Character, Conduct, and Support reflects our shared commitment to restorative practices, focusing on repairing harm, fostering accountability, and nurturing stronger relationships. At this time, I would invite my team member, Mr. Mika Ward Satterfield, to speak on Goal Two C.
Good evening, and happy National School Counseling Week to all of those watching. When students feel safe, supported, and valued at school, they are more likely to attend school regularly and are better equipped to engage in learning, build meaningful relationships, and overcome challenges. This is the focus of Goal Two C, and I would like to invite the team members to stand.
Could we move to the next slide?
Slide, please. And the next slide, please. In place. Our school social workers leverage our partnership with the Elnaby Spalding Conflict Resolution Center to support students with chronic absenteeism and work with their families to identify and remove barriers to regular school attendance. The Conflict Resolution Center uses a restorative approach, mirroring our DPS values to create an action plan to help remove barriers, to create an action plan to help students resume regular school attendance. To date, the DPS CRC partnership has served over 100 students and families. In progress. This year, school attendance teams led by our school social workers were asked to focus on Tier One, Every-Day, On-Time Attendance Awareness. This effort expands September Attendance Awareness Month activities year-long and incorporates our commitment to restorative practices and social-emotional learning, creating school environments in which students are eager to belong. Some of the creative activities include social media campaigns, perfect and improved attendance recognition, and attendance-focused spirit weeks. Student Support Services created the Tiered Support Guidance for Attendance and the Attendance Standard Treatment Protocol, which served as support, which served to support school teams to organize and direct interventions and supports. Throughout this year, school administrators, school social workers, and other key staff will have professional development to better understand how to implement these new resources. It is no secret that school bus transportation has been a challenge this school year. However, this is not the only reason our students miss school. While going through the mediation process with the Conflict Resolution Center, our students facing chronic absenteeism have shared the following reasons for missing school. Family circumstances, including lack of supervision and divorce, socioeconomic challenges like neighborhood safety and housing insecurity, and mental health conditions like school-related anxiety. Since we know that our students and families are facing these challenges, our Student Support Services Department has a wide array of resources and support to address these areas. In addition, we are constantly searching local, state, and national resources that will help enhance our students' ability to access their education and live full and healthy lives. Next steps. As you know, improving our overall attendance rate must be a collaborative effort with our entire Durham community. Moving forward, we will create strategic district-wide attendance campaigns and increase community education. Next, you will hear from Amy Miller, Director of Integrated Academic and Behavior Systems.
Good evening. So next slide, please. Here you see our team and the goal for Two D. I would ask for the members of Goal Team Two D to stand at this time. Next slide, please. So the Panorama SEL Survey is administered twice annually to all students in fourth through 12th grades and students with families that opt in in kindergarten through third grade. Despite a relentless effort by multiple departments to increase opt-ins, the Panorama SEL Survey, as well as the DPS Student Climate Survey, participation is down since opt-in was initiated with the Parents' Bill of Rights passing in 2023. We have also just concluded the administration of a smaller survey of students in grades five, seven, and 11 called the Goal Two D Student Perception Survey, which does not require parental opt-in, but does ask all students to provide feedback to the prompt. Overall, my school is a good place to attend and learn. We are compiling the results from this survey and plan to use them to inform progress regarding this aspect of Goal Two D. Although response rates for the Panorama Survey are lower, we still have a majority at 65.7% of all students responding in grades K-12 and 86.8% in grades four through 12, where opt-in is not required. For this reason, we'll focus on trends obtained only from the Panorama SEL Survey, not the Student Climate Survey. On the Panorama SEL Survey, you'll see an increase in our overall sense of belonging in the results at all grade levels. For context, sense of belonging is defined by Panorama as the extent to which students feel that they are valued members of their school's community. Grades three through five is on track with meeting our strategic plan goal, but grade six through 12 is currently off track. Diving deeper into the 612 results, we see lower favorable responses to this question for English language learners and female students, and higher favorable responses for our students identified as academically and intellectually gifted. Some challenges we have with this goal include low participation rate and the difficulties with favorability ratings in terms of grades six through 12. We have addressed the participation rate for the Climate Survey with the creation of the new Two D Perception Survey. For the SEL Survey, we have had conversations about whether the survey for grades K-2 is something worth continuing in light of the low participation. In addition, we have continually reassessed our administration window to ensure it's the optimal time for student participation. To increase students' sense of belonging in grades six through 12, we will continue to work on increasing implementation of our SEL curriculums and cultural frameworks with fidelity. In addition, the Student Support Services team is collaborating with the ESL team and the Office of Equity Affairs to find ways to effectively increase sense of belonging across all student groups in grade 612. A Behavior Standard Treatment Protocol was rolled out this year to support schools with the implementation of consistent, evidence-based behavior practices for all students. And in addition, to continue this And in addition, to continue this work, we're working with schools to interpret and use the data from the surveys through SEL resource implementation mapping tools and data analysis protocols. This is currently being installed in an online course for school staff, and we've helped numerous school staffs use resource mapping tools to match resources from Panorama's Platform Playbook to find actionable strategies to increase students' sense of belonging. Okay, so to conclude, we see each goal within Priority Two as inextricably linked. By enhancing the implementation of our SEL curricula and strengthening our cultural frameworks, which is Two A, we anticipate a positive impact on student attendance, Two C, a reduction in out-of-school suspensions, Two B, and an increase in students' feelings of belonging, Two D. With this integration in mind, we now welcome Dr. Tobias from Durham School of the Arts to share how they use the Student Success Platform we have to increase performance for each of our Priority Two goals.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. It is nice to come up and talk about what we are actually doing in schools. We use Panorama extensively at DSA. We were one of the first early adopters. And initially, I had the faculty trained in one of our beginning workdays on the strengths and the weaknesses of Panorama, so they immediately embraced it. We started looking at the student surveys, and we were not excited about our results, especially for the sense of belonging, which came out at about forty percent of our students had a sense of belonging. We did not like that. That became a school-wide theme for us based on our Panorama result. Our school improvement team has kept this as an equity and culture goal for the last two years, and we continue to work on sense of belonging. And we look at our Panorama data at midpoint and at the end when we get the results. Our goal is to improve our sense of belonging score on the Panorama, so we infuse different things within our school to make sure that our students feel like they belong. We also use Panorama to look at critical attendance needs. The attendance data that we derive from Panorama drives our attendance committee. The team of counselors, the social worker, and myself meet with our students that are critical on the attendance list, and we make attendance plans, which we put in Panorama. Panorama data drives our MTSS meetings. We look at students that have a variety of critical needs, which ranges from academic, SEL, behavior, and attendance. We look at that data that is provided, and the team makes recommendations with teachers to assist our students. We also place and monitor interventions in Panorama. Teachers, of course, also look at Panorama to get a whole-school approach to their child because it gives such a wide variety of data points. When we meet with our parents, one of the first things I do is I open up Panorama and I look at where the student falls academically, behaviorally, and with their SEL and attendance because those are key data points outside of our EOC or EOG reports that are important. Overall, it's really a great tool because it has such comprehensive data, and we use it all the time to ensure that we're looking at all the needs of our students and their well-roundedness in our school. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation update on Priority Two.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Information.
All right. Thank you to everyone who was here tonight, part of the multiple teams that make up Priority Two. All right, so we, you know, the board is now on a timed agenda. So, we have in this section about five minutes left, so maybe we can just try to keep our comments or questions ten. Okay, we have ten minutes. We'll try to keep them brief and to the point. Would anybody like to start? Chair Rogers.
Thanks, everybody, for this presentation. I'm appreciative of the anecdotal data on Panorama student success. I'm underwhelmed by the fact that we selected our least-ever school to present about this, and we're not highlighting how it benefits the most marginalized students in the district. I would love to see some more anecdotal information about how this is, how success is being measured at schools that serve our most marginalized students. And I say that as a DSA alum. It was not diverse then, it's not diverse now. It is. It is a work in progress, and I know some of this work speaks to that. But would have loved to heard how it's really impacting in spaces where we want to see faster growth.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Byer. I want to thank the team that is here that is digging into some of the most challenging work, but the, some of the most important work that is going on, lift up National School Counseling Week and all the work that those folks do, often behind the scenes every day. And so appreciative of their partnership. And acknowledge that we have work to do. I think Dr. Lewis would be the first to own that and admit it as a data nerd. And wondered specifically when we talked about addressing Policy Forty-three oh one, which I was excited to see that a team is working on. Kind of who's working on that? And if, if parents or others might want to contribute ideas, who should they share those with? Because we know that that is due for an update, but also has to be informed by educators. I know when we worked on it before, it needed eighteen months, and then the group working on it, the forty-five people working on it, needed one more time. So I just wondered kind of if you can put voice to how that's going and what the next steps in that are. Thank you so much.
So, I think the initial revision of Forty-three oh one was in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And since that time, I think we're in a different place. And what we need to address with the, with the current Code of Conduct and discipline policies are going to be addressed through absolutely engaging with our students. We have time set aside to meet right now with our Superintendent Student Advisory Group, who also represent larger groups of students around what their needs are. We often get feedback from them. We also have Two B and a principal advisory that works with both Two A, Goal Two A, and Goal Two B, who will be providing us feedback on that. In addition, we'll be working with some of our partners on ensuring that we've embedded the restorative practices into that. We initially hope to bring a revised Forty-three oh one that is, excuse me, I should say, a revised Code of Character Conduct and Support by April seventh for your, for your approval. That is our goal.
And so if folks have feedback, if they're listening, if they have concerns, does that go to you as, as leading that?
Absolutely. You can reach out to me through any of the platforms accessible to you.
Thank you. And your, look, your phone number is right here in the.
It's right there. Yes.
Thank you so much. I know that that is so important to our community. Thank you.
Thumstead.
Thank y'all for this work and for the team of folks that are here this evening. I think this goal is so important and tied to our first goal around academic achievement. If students feel like they belong in school, they will come to school, which means that we can be working on some of that academic work that we know is vital. I see lots of head nods in the audience. Y'all can't see that online, but I appreciate that affirmation. I do have a question about Two A, I think. And you, Dr. Maddox Perry, you talked about the restorative practice checklist. You talked about this fidelity indicators that we're working on. And I know this will be anecdotal, but what are you seeing the impacts of that being so far in schools?
So, anecdotally, both of those tools, this is really the first year that we have had piloted with some of our stop violence high schools. But what we're seeing is a renewed confidence in being able to not only engage in textbook implementation, but having what is almost like approval to practice it. By having the checklist, we've utilized that as almost a self-assessment, and schools are able to honestly look at their level of implementation and select their own coaching and areas that they want to grow in relation to those indicators.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I think I would love, and this is Bettina, would love to look to the other board members, if and we have a presentation about this next, that we kind of get a little bit more around, you know, this many checklists have been done, this many walkthroughs have been done, this is what we've seen, kind of the impact to be. I think that would just be helpful to understand how schools are using the tools. Sorry, I have another question for you too, Dr. Maddox Perry. And I, a couple follow-ups on that too, because the other, while everybody's taking notes, I'll just keep rambling. But the other thing I think about is how can we get students, especially in our middle and high schools, but our elementary schools as well, involved in thinking about this goal too, right? So if we have a restorative practice checklist, like how are students also thinking about, this is what I see, this is what I don't see in our classes in a way that I think can be really, they feel ownership of some of this belonging, which I think is really powerful as well.
Holly Smith, I'm said, ask for a checklist around. Say that again for me.
When this presentation comes again, if we could have some more details, some more data around how many checklists or maybe how checklists are used, how many walkthroughs are happening with principals, that kind of information. I don't know if it's data or what the right way for y'all to present that to.
Absolutely. Duly noted. Ms. Miller wanted to speak today. I know you asked the question specifically to me, but I think she probably is more informed on a part of the process that's unique to her work with our Restorative Practices Leadership Team.
We're just, for restorative practices as the cultural framework, we are just working with our Restorative Practice District Leadership Team that we have together to really put together, based on the Baltimore City Schools Implementation Fidelity Assessment, they use for restorative practices. And that includes, what we're really excited about, is you interview ten students during each of those walkthroughs. So you interview ten staff members and ten students. So it'll be a really unique opportunity to see that, hear that student voice about what are they seeing? And are they actually seeing restorative practices implemented in the classroom? Yeah.
That's wonderful.
I'll ask the, I'll ask the question that Chair Rogers was asking. Just to, do we have consensus around that collection of data or presentation of data for the next presentation on this? Okay. All right. It sounds like we have consensus and interest in that. Go ahead.
You, Dr. Max Perry mentioned this, but I don't know who the right person to answer is, around one of the challenges of time, which we know is always an issue, but how to prioritize time for SEL along with the curricular needs of the school. And I'm wondering what a next step might be on? How do we prioritize some of the work that we need to do around SEL support for our students?
So, one way that we try to prioritize time is very carefully. And I think Ms. Ward Satterfield can speak to that because of some of the work she has been doing with some of our partners, and I don't want to.
Yes, so many of our SEL curriculum use the data that we collect here at the school, specifically the Panorama data, to create a scope and sequence to help align the lessons that are going to be presented with the needs, evidence in our school-level data. Those that are not specific to our Panorama data provide scope and sequence related to just trends that are seen in data. We remind, this time of the year, right, especially with the Infinite Campus rollout, our schools are creating master schedules. So we put those expectations for fifteen minutes a day for elementary, forty-five minutes a week for secondary, back in front of those school-level administrators and scheduling teams to ensure that they are aware of that. We collaborate with our Curriculum and Instruction Department to make sure that we're not providing competing messages to ensure that it is a priority. One of our principals said yesterday in the meeting that, you know, academics will always be the priority, but we need to ensure that SEL doesn't feel like it's competing with academics as a priority.
Board member, I'd also add, one of the things that we're working on in CNI is some more clarity around those kinds of issues, specifically around time. Very often, and in the past, those notions of how much time should be spent on subject areas to include SEL have been more in the area of suggestion, right? We are, you know, strategically raggoting up those expectations. And so one of the things that will be a part of what we roll out to principals this year as part of the projects that we're working on, see, working on NCNI, is some more directive language about those times and some more statements about, you know, those expectation, those being expectations as opposed to options. That will also be a bit of what we hope will come out of the work around the Code of Student Conduct. One of the things that we, that we have noted is that while this board has expressed support for restorative practices, provided funding for restorative practices, positions, there is no place in board policy currently where engagement with restorative practices is actually a requirement, right? But those are some of the things that we're working on in terms of shifting, right, our stance and our posture from a scenario where we are suggesting that it would be awesome if you do this to being very clear about the fact that we believe it's important for you to do this. And so our expectation is that you will do these things in each school.
Dr. King, as a follow-up, is that part of the reasoning behind the calendar shifts that we approved on consent tonight? It looked like some of the PLCs were moving from Fridays back to Wednesdays, and there was some more intentionality about teacher workdays earlier in the year, more protected teacher learning time.
Well, that, that more reflects the fact that, you know, a couple of years ago, when those calendars were created for, and I wasn't here, so I'm not sure why, but we only had three pre-service workdays in those calendars. And it is utterly impossible to do the work we need to do, both at the district level and the school level, in three days. So you'll remember that last year, we went through that same process where we added additional pre-service days. In terms of the shifts of early release days, if I'm very honest, we, we, we were concerned, and I probably should say I was concerned, that, that the way those days were structured in our calendar in the past gave some mixed messaging. An early release day scheduled on a Friday suggests that one might be invited to begin the weekend early. And so we wanted to shift that, that model so that those days, when we place those in our calendar, it is very clear that the expectation is that we would be doing professional development, not starting early weekends or early holidays, if you will. And, you know, it, if I'm honest, it puts a principal in a difficult spot when school ends three hours early on a Friday to have to kind of maintain the standard that I really do expect you to stick around for the PD. So we want, we felt like shifting it would help create a more definitive message about our expectation.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, I have one more question. Thank you, Dr. King. That was really helpful. I liked the shift from suggestion to expectation. And this is along the lines of even what you were just saying, Dr. King. I feel like there's a, we see an issue, we're digging into the reasons for that, and then using our resources to address that. So in talking about the chronic absenteeism. So in talking about the chronic absenteeism, so I want to mention, here are the reasons that we're learning from the Conflict Resolution Center, and here's what we're doing to address that. I wanted to know for the suspension category, if we feel like we have clear reasons why we thought suspensions are going up? And what are the particular strategies that we might be using to address them? I know there are some that might be whole district, but I also know individual schools are going to have different strategies as they're supporting students. But I think that trend is concerning, that we're seeing it going in the wrong direction. So I wanted to know really clearly what we were doing to address that.
Well, I, I think it's difficult to, to ever get beyond the anecdotal when we start talking about causes for suspensions, because they, they are so varied. And honestly, I, I think the most important thing we can do around messaging around reduction in suspensions is frankly messaging to our staff and to our principals particularly, that it is not our expectation that every time a child can be suspended, you will be suspended. I, I can tell you, very often, when, when we have conversations with principals about suspensions, one of the things that they very seriously worry about is whether or not folks will be concerned about their seriousness around student safety, you know, if they aren't particularly stern around some sorts, some kinds of behavior. And so we want to begin to communicate with our principals, and we are beginning to communicate with them. You know, the understanding that we, we recognize that school is a place of learning, and sometimes that learning, and certainly, really more often, that learning also is reflected in the need to help students learn about behavior. And so we feel like it is absolutely appropriate for, for our principals to see inappropriate behaviors as opportunities to help students learn about behavior and that there will not be negative consequences when principals decide to take us seriously on our suggestions about our value around restorative practices. And so I think, you know, so far, the expectation, establishing that expectation. The other thing that I think has helped so far that we've, that we've done this year is requiring consultations with principal supervisors around suspensions for our youngest students. And so just making sure that principals walk through that process with their principal supervisors to make sure that we've considered every particular option as it relates to what we might do other than a suspension in a given situation. And, and at risk of opening a can of worms, we are seeing data from our, especially from our elementary schools in our data meetings, where I can tell you, we are seeing some, some pretty good success in terms of suspension reductions, particularly at the elementary level. So we're, we're cautiously optimistic about what that data is going to look like this year.
Ms. Carter Otten.
Thank you so much for this presentation and for all the questions so far and additional information that, that y'all have shared. I don't have a lot, but except I was, I was curious to know, we received a presentation in May of last year that had, that in looking back at was really helpful to have more granular presentation of the discipline data. And I was wondering if that's something that, it was more granular than it was presented the data over time. Is that the ideal time of year to receive that kind of data in, in May? And if so, could we expect that again this year with the same type of presentation where it breaks it out by trends over time and then long-term suspension versus short-term and?
Yes-ish. That time of year, I would argue that a little bit later is better because the reason for that is there is, there is a verification process that our, that our data, that our discipline data goes through. It takes place a little bit later than, than May. And that process allows us to, that gives principals the opportunity to make any changes that they feel like need to be made to that data based on, you know, what is, things that have actually happened in the school, and that data is cleaned. So I think May is certainly better than February, but probably, you know, June is probably an even better period. Because that allows us to make sure that that data has gone through that verification process. And it is, you know, you know, as, as right as, as right as rain, if you will.
Excuse me. That sounds great then. And June feels better, at least to me, than like August, like starting the school off with a discipline data presentation, maybe finishing it with more data. And I was curious to, I guess I have some, some questions that came, that Durham Advocates for Exceptional Children raised a couple of issues that are curious to me too, which, and maybe this has been discussed before. One is how we define students with disabilities for the purpose of this data? Can you remind us? I'm sure it's a reminder, you've told us before, but.
So I, I, I shared with Ms. Chavez earlier that I, I'd like to take that question back. Those things become very, very technical, and I would like to look at the guidance both from the state and within board policy, so that I'm absolutely clear about what the response is there. I have a sense, but I want to be 100% sure before I share with you what that is.
Okay. Thanks so much. And, and this, what's reported here is all, it's students that were suspended at least one time, but it's all types of suspension. Is that right?
Reported.
Right. In the presentation tonight, the S2B, so when we say suspended, we mean?
Doc, it is short-term suspension rates.
Short-term only, so that not?
That data metric. Now, the schools and the data teams are looking at all, the in-school, the long-term and everything. But this data metric is for the short-term suspension?
Okay. So not including long-term or in-school suspension?
In this goal metric. Right.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. And as you were talking earlier, Dr. King, it, about school, the support you're providing for elementary schools in particular, for support and guidance, maybe for when they use suspensions and how that happens. I'm, and we heard tonight about all the different ways that we're implementing some great social-emotional learning curriculum to try to create more positive environments in schools. When there's a child that's having a behavioral challenge, that, so they've had the positive stuff, they're having a behavioral challenge, I guess I'm curious to know maybe in the May, June update, a little bit more about, or maybe when the revisions to the policy come to us, like some of the other supports that are in place for the school-level staff? Like who's working with that child to provide them with the support they need to avoid being suspended, but help support the behavior that's happening? Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I was just, want to kind of follow up on Ms. Carter Otten's point, but maybe a little different. I would like when we, if we have a June presentation on this though, to get a, I know suspensions are coded, right? So get a sense of what those kind of top three or top five might be and get a little more in the, like, this is what we noticed are trends, and these are what we're doing to address those trends. Because I just, you know, I went back to find that presentation. I was like, oh, we still didn't talk about what the things were. And I think we need to know, as a district, what are our students being suspended for that are trends? And then what are we doing district-wide to address that? You know, is it fight? Is it conflict? Is it those disruptive behavior or, what's the other one that they use that's really subjective?
Disrespect?
Insubordination. Yeah. We really get into the equity work around, you know, who decided that this was insubordination or disrespect, right? And so I just, I want us to keep pushing on, actually looking at some of those reasons and those trends so that we can be clear around what we need to focus our efforts in, in the school, as a school district as a whole.
All right. I'm gonna make a few brief comments. I don't have any questions, and then we'll move on to the next item. Uh, thank you for presenting on the many strategies and the evolution of these. I look forward to hearing more about the evolution and what works and what, you know, what you might have found doesn't work. And, and thank you for also the update on the revision of 4301. I'm excited about that. I, I wanted to say, I asked for some additional desegregated data around race and gender. And thank you, Dr. Pittman. I know you'll bring that. I know that other colleagues are interested in that as well. And so that'll be provided and shared, of course, with the whole board. And I'll just say, I'm, yeah, I'm also, I, I would like to look at the data around black male students with disabilities because I'm interested in our intersectional data and looking at who is most affected by some of these disparities. I also appreciated the questions from the Durham Advocates for Exceptional Children. Jessica, or Ms. Carter Otten highlighted some of those. But thank you all for this work. It's really important. It underscores everything else that we do, so. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, we will move on to Administrative Services, and we have an update on the current year budget challenges with Mr. Teeter. This is also budgeted for 30 minutes, so we'll see how we do.
It's 20-minute presentation and 10-minute question.
All right.
Okay. Okay. I need about five. Yes, so. Okay, so good evening, Board Chair Rogers, Board members, Dr. Lewis. As promised, in the budget calendar, we would come back to you with another update on the current year challenges. And just kicking it off on the next slide, just lifting back up the feedback that Dr. Lewis received in the Listening and Learning Tour. Didn't know if he wanted to say anymore about that, other than that, that we're just keeping that front and center. The next slide is somewhat of a repeat from the previous presentations, but with a few adjustments to reflect some things that we're contemplating at the senior staff level about how we might grapple the current year challenge. So the, the first section, all the way down to that first bold line, reflects where we left off in our, our previous conversations. The, the bottom section of this reflects some things that maybe we had started talking about, what we were not quite prepared to present to you this evening. One of those first items, right, is some conversation around the Mackenzie Scott donation in Durham Public Schools and the possibility of some funds that can be realigned and leveraged to help troubleshoot the, the current year challenge. This particular dollar figure, so the $3,859.694, it represents line items in that budget that have no activity up to this point in the current school year. And so that was sort of our first level of focus to review, to see what we might be able to do. And to be clear, we're really stressing the word potential here because we are still having some conversations with folks on staff about some things that might have been planned to happen in February or March that Jeremy doesn't know about, and, and that we want to make sure we honor some things that had good intentions. So we, we may see this number pivot a little bit, but wanted to, to keep that out front and center as we have conversations about that. As the year progresses, we will, we'll continue to focus on other line items in the budget that maybe had some activity, but it came in cheaper than the project manager had perhaps budgeted. And we can look at recouping some dollars there. So we'll conduct some analysis a little bit later on that. But started with the low-hanging fruit here of the items that had no activity as of this point in time. So we're pretty deep in the year and pretty close to our spending deadline. So some of this, or a majority of this should materialize for us. Another area of attention that, that's under review for us, we have various funds in the district that we administer. Our, our Fund Six fund is an area where we park some of our restricted dollars, or a, a large share of our restricted dollars. Our pre-K programming has some funds there, and, and they have funding that's scattered across a collection of funds. And so we do make a pretty good local investment in pre-K. And so we've got a little over $1.4 million that has accumulated in our Fund Six. That's earmarked for pre-K, where we may be able to make some readjustments between local to this funding source to free up temporarily some local dollars in this current year. So again, this is another item where we're having some conversations with the folks that, that handle pre-K, just making sure that everyone feels good about it, but feeling, feeling good about those resources being available to help us for this year. The next slide, we touch on just high-level overview of some of those categories that are associated with the Mackenzie Scott dollars. There are some, there are some fairly large line items there. So that, that top line item, right, are things that are unbudgeted. I understand from some history here, there, there may have been some plans for that at one point in time that were put on pause. And so a little over one and a half million dollars there. The next line item down that's a million dollars is very much, seems like a placeholder. I think there was some, and specifically, it's parked on a membership line. And so that just made us feel like that this is truly a placeholder in the budget, and it, and it may be something that we can tap into to help solve the current year problem. You know, and obviously, the numbers descend from there, and we're, we're having some very thoughtful conversations about those line items and, and what's in the works with those. Ahead of this meeting, I received a couple of questions about some specific projects that were of particular importance, and we wanted to make sure that those items were taken care of. So we did specifically receive a question about the $150,000 commitment to the Theater at Hillside. We were able to confirm that that work did occur ahead of this evaluation. So those dollars are not tangled up in what we see here on the screen. And then there was also some concern about the vehicles that were earmarked for CTE programming specifically. I'm being careful with my words. I've been advised to call them mobile classrooms of sorts. And so that includes programmings with fire, food, et cetera. And so those, those mobile classrooms were ultimately purchased and are not tied up in these particular line items. So those are just two specific ones that we had questions about ahead of this that I wanted to make sure we addressed as a part of the presentation. The next slide is just a, just another reminder of, of how we've used the county dollars. I know that we've, we've heard the question quite a bit about the almost $8.9 million investment in classified pay. And again, just want to verify, you know, at the podium, that we did invest those dollars in line items for, for classified pay. And, and it lines up with, with what the needs were in order to administer the changes with classified pay for this school year. So just wanted to lift that one up in particular, and we, we've talked about these others. Just sort of in closing, before we take questions, just a reminder of, on the next slide, of the, of the upcoming deadlines in our budget development process. You know, February 17th is when we're looking for requests from senior staff, and they've received those workbooks and looking forward to evaluating and costing out those things that come forward there. Our central office leaders are having some very serious conversations under Dr. Giovanni's leadership about what we can do to continue to evaluate positions that are in our departments and, and how we might rearrange things on our teams, things that we have vacant on our, in our departments that we might want to reassess. So we'll have some, some good conversation there and hopefully find some opportunities to continue to improve and tighten up as we shield our schools from the decisions that we need to make. We are very excited for a public hearing on February 20th, and we are putting in motion some activity through the Dollars and Decisions series that you have heard about previously that we're hoping will provoke and encourage some meaningful input from the community at the February 20th meeting. So we'll just share, it's a good time to share that next week, there will be a communication that goes out to our community, a thought exchange of sorts, where they'll have an opportunity to communicate to us what they see as the top five priorities for Durham Public Schools budget next year. We look forward to working with the board on February 20th as well, to hear what your priorities are so that we can get some early insights as, as we work as a staff to develop the superintendent's recommended budget. March 3rd, we're planning to have presentations from cabinet members and have a little more sort of dialogue around the requests that we received. And then ultimately, we're looking to have that book in front of you by March 27th for you to have conversations, and we'll have another public hearing at that time as well. So with all that said, leaving 11 minutes and 47 seconds for questions.
Thank you so much. All right. We're gonna start with Chair Rogers.
What time is the public hearing on February 20th?
I think we would need to agree to that. I think I have always sort of operated with them happening about 30 minutes before the, the regularly scheduled meeting, but I'll leave that up to the superintendent and board leadership.
I just saw it and put it on for 5:30 ahead of the 6:30, just as a placeholder just now, but a half an hour doesn't quite seem enough for Durham.
Understood.
Chair Rogers? Chair Rogers, more questions?
I think that Mr. Tab's question is, are we deciding that now?
The time.
The time. And does the full board need to be here?
That would be...
Or just a quorum?
At least a quorum, absolutely.
Okay.
Other questions?
Are we going to decide?
Oh, I was just going to say, can we decide? Is it 5:30 on the 20th? Is that...
5:30. Everybody, some thumbs up? Okay. Let's see a quorum of thumbs up. Okay.
I can't commit yet. Sorry.
Just on the scheduling thing, are you all going to propose the second hearing date to us, or...
And so at this point in time, on the budget calendar, we have that identified as March 27th. So that'll be, so this meeting on the 20th, we're looking for input ahead of us developing the superintendent's budget so that we can have that input. And then on March 27th, our vision is, folks will be reacting to ultimately what we produced, and we can start receiving that feedback. So March 27th would be our target there.
I imagine we'll do the same time, or aim for the same time, on March 27th, 5:30?
I would wonder if we would want to do it on a different day.
Could we hear more about what that might look like? I know I have the experience of what it looked like last year, but what your vision is for the format of that? And did I also hear that that's the primary opportunity for board members also to provide some input?
Right. So on the meeting on the 20th, we're looking largely for people to share with us what their priorities are and what their concerns are, and I think Dr. Lewis was, maybe, you're good.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, it's my understanding that the budget hearing is just for the public.
And then you said on the 20th, at the meeting, you would ask the board members to share their priorities.
That's right.
But then the second public hearing is for, after the superintendent has released the budget, people can respond to. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you. So on the 20th, we're not, we won't be reflecting on any kind of like framework or proposal or categories? It'll just be open...
We'll just be looking for things that you have observed and as you have processed feedback from your post as a board member, what you think might be some good priorities for us heading into this cycle.
But we have consensus around 5:30 on February 20th? And do you all also want to try and achieve consensus for 5:30 on March 27th? Or do you want to wait and discuss that later?
I heard Ms. Umstead plead for another day. I don't know if anybody else was interested in that. I don't think an hour might be enough on that either, so that's, might be the reason, some of your reasoning for not making that a marathon for us and staff.
I also need to consult and make sure all the cards are aligned for me to get off work, get my kid, and get here by 5:30. So committing to both at 5:30 right now doesn't feel conducive to my needs, but by all means, the board should do what they need.
Mr. Tab?
Just a point of clarity, is this standard that we decide on dates in the middle of the, of the meeting without checking schedules?
It happens occasionally.
Could we maybe...
Go ahead.
We need at least four people that are, can be present at 5:30 on the 20th, right? That's our first need. Could we wait a little bit and get back to Nicole about that, or? I'm hearing that's what you might, and I feel like I need a little bit more time to make sure my schedule and Chair Rogers identified the same, so.
Mr. Tab, are you saying you'd like a doodle poll to be sent out?
I would suggest with February 20th, that's coming up so soon, I think we're taking the time to sort of announce that. And I did hear a quorum of us are available on that day at 5:30 before the board meeting. It sounded to me like there needed to be perhaps a doodle poll for the second budget hearing, where the public's responding. What do you all think about that? Okay. Yes? Okay. It looks like we'll have other dates in mind besides the 27th. Ms. Umstead suggested perhaps a different day with a longer time because there's more to react to, so. All right, Ms. Rogers, Chair Rogers, and we'll work with our board clerk, Ms. Smith, to find an appropriate time and date for that week around March 27th. Thank you. All right. Other questions? Ms. Byer?
Just, Mr. Teeter, just gratitude for the ways that you continue to peel back this onion and find ways to make up for our budgeting challenges. Also, don't want to kind of leave without expressing just gratitude for Mackenzie Scott and her generosity in giving unrestricted funds, which allow us this flexibility, but also acknowledging that these funds had plans, right? And when I see growing together on here multiple times, I think we need to make sure that we, moving forward, are identifying new funds in our coming budget year to fulfill all the promises that we've made. I believe, unless I'm totally wrong, that the $1 million there might have been for affordable teacher housing. It is a dream that this board has had for many, 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 many years, and housing in Durham has only continued to accelerate the cost for our staff. And talking to staff that cannot afford to live in this community is heartbreaking to all of us. And so while we access these, I think it's critical that we not let those dreams die and those plans die going forward, but that we find ways to invest. And then the biggest glaring challenge to me are the positions that are budgeted, and while many are sitting vacant, I think it will be important for us quickly to have more information on ways those vacancies or those position cuts will impact students and schools in the future and how we can best plan for that, which we thought we'd already planned for. So I appreciate your help, and I appreciate you bringing additional information that is giving us more reassurance as we move forward that we will be able to protect students in the ways that we want to this calendar year. I don't think those are questions, they were just me rambling, but thank you for your leadership.
Ms. Carter-Hotten?
I share Ms. Byer's gratitude. Thanks for doing all of this work for us to find the money, and I appreciate that, and also the kind of reorganizing and thinking critically about how to make it to the extent possible where cuts are not coming from our schools. So thank you for that, and look forward to continuing to see how we can move forward with intention in the next year with a budget that we're happy with.
Ms. Umstead?
Thanks again, Mr. Teeter, for all of the work you've done on this. I think it would be helpful for me to know, in the positions and vacancies, and y'all let me know, board members, if we already talked about where those reside? Because I think as I'm thinking about my budget priorities as a board member, that I would love to share with you on the 20th, I think it'd be nice to know where these positions live and what positions we might consider wanting to keep, or what, or if some, I think you mentioned in the last meeting, there were a good number of vacancies, what positions might we not fill through attrition? And so that would be helpful, I think, for me to have a little bit more of that information. I think I'm also, this is just a statement that might need later follow-up that I say often, I don't know if you've heard it yet, Mr. Teeter, but I think we should really be thinking about multi-year budgeting. And so when I look at this and our challenge that we're in with this operational set aside, I'm wondering, what does that look like for next year and then next year? Are we working towards getting people back to being at 100? And so how are we thinking really intention, 100%, intentionally about multi-year, where we're going to be? And then what other initiatives do we have coming down the line? Some of that we know we can't necessarily anticipate when it thinks about what the state may do, but there is, I remember often, sometimes talking about hospitalization. We know might increase each year, this, some of these portions. So how do we think a little strategically about this year and next year and what might be coming down the pipe? So I think that's something that I'm just thinking about as we prepare for the 20th.
All right. I think I'm the last one. I'll share a few thoughts. I thank you for the presentation, for the update, and for articulating exactly where the money is coming from with regard to the Mackenzie Scott funds. I appreciate the assessment of central office positions. I meant to note that last time. I also want to support the idea of the multi-year budgeting that Ms. Umstead brings up regularly, I think that's, that would be a really great way to look at, kind of in alignment with our strategic plan, where we're putting our resources for the next few years. And then I just want to say, what I'm most interested in, I continue to see this as a cleanup year, thank you for being thorough, but I'm most interested in the systems that you're putting into place to ensure that our budget going forward will be accurate, tight, and centering of our students, particularly those who need the greatest support. Thank you.
Ms. Carter-Hotten?
I just wanted to build on what Ms. Umstead asked for vacancy data, I think, and that's of interest to me too, and as I'm thinking about, and for that same reason, as we're thinking about what we need, what information we need to be able to identify our priorities for the budget. And I wonder how challenging that is to get to us, like if that's possible, and along those lines, this might be a bigger ask, but like something akin to turnover data, or, so we have an idea of who's leaving, or which, where staff are, yeah, that could inform also some priorities for the next budget year. But again, just my ask, so not sure how other board members feel about that.
I'll ask for consensus in a moment, but let me go to Chair Rogers.
I think that I want the same information that y'all want, but I think I have a more overarching question, I think maybe for Dr. Lewis, you might not have the answer right Do we think that the current vacancies that we're seeing are what you're planning to budget for and accommodate for next year? Or do you think that there's going to be some sort of moving people into positions that are vacant and, like shifting of people so that the same positions aren't necessarily the vacant ones, and that maybe more different positions are on state-funded positions versus local positions? Do you think that there's going to be some different shakeup that you would use to inform how much money is in the personnel budget? Therefore, then the vacancy data may not make sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I don't want to, sometimes the word "shakeup" can kind of create panic and harm here, don't want to use that term, but I do, I will say, we will, and we can bring this information back, we just need to look critically at those positions and take advantage of attrition, also, and look at those critical vacancies that we still need to fill, i.e. EC. And so we definitely will want to keep those vacant as well, but really looking holistically at where our vacancies are, and again, talking to our principals to see, is this an area you need to fill, or through attrition, is it done, you know? So, well, we can bring that information back to you, definitely in time enough for budget decisions.
Ms. Byer?
Ms. Byer?
Or Dr. King, something to add? No, okay.
No, I'm trying to also think through, like, and I know y'all are thinking it through as a team, but the dollars and...
Decisions.
Decisions, as y'all are demonstrating and thinking of new ways to show how the district, where our money goes. And I think one thing we've done in the past, years and years ago, was to show how much state money goes into certain types of positions, how much local we put above that, to really be able to demonstrate to our staff our local investment is going into staff. Some of those things that, if we're allotted one counselor per 400 students, right, but Durham allocates it one per 300, whatever, whatever those formulas are, I think some of that information kind of paints the picture for what we're doing with our local money. And then I leave it to you all to bring kind of your best analysis of what biggest impact and recommendations do you have on maximizing student outcomes with what we have. I don't know if I'm saying anything or asking a question, but I look forward to ways that you show kind of what we're doing and inform best practices.
And I think, I think I'll kind of like marry the last two kind of board observations together here for a second, and so one, I think when we, when we look at our positions and our vacancies, I think we see a collection of good intentions that sometimes don't have the best outcome. So for example, right, so Durham, for the past few years, has very much had the intention of, we will have lower class sizes than with the state funds. And so that's a tremendous investment. It was easy to populate when we had bounty full Esser dollars. Esser dollars are gone, we're tying up a lot of budget line items for positions that are vacant, and part two, right, is the teachers haven't materialized. And so, right, so there's that conversation, right, it's that balancing act of, do we hug to a more normal class size and have a qualified teacher? And so we're solving a budget problem and an instruction slash personnel problem at the same time. So we're, there's that balancing act that we'll walk through, and we're starting to have those conversations as we think about enrollment projections and we think about how we're going to allot resources this year. You know, we've had some other interesting conversations about coverage, right? We've talked about our EC vacancies and decisions that have been made at a staff level that have made it harder to troubleshoot those things that we need to walk back and that we need to solve. And so it's really wonderful yesterday for HR, finance, Dr. Giovanni, EC, to sit down and work as partners to figure out how we're going to solve some of those challenges around the vacancies and make it work for our students in Durham. So certainly, to your point, right, there's been a tremendous local investment in positions in Durham beyond what the state affords, and we look forward to kind of telling that story as we go through the series and looking at, how do we work those levers to solve the longer-term budget solution and not just this year?
No, I'll just say, kudos to our OPA team and Jeremy, they pretty much have season one mapped out, and I think where our dollars go is probably episode four, and then funding so, no, seriously, funding sources is episode three.
Are there other questions? I heard you say, Dr. Lewis, you'll provide us some information about vacancies and all of that, so I think, all right, I think we are good to go. Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Our next item is Policy 7502, Salary Administration, and I pass it to Dr. Giovanni. I'm sorry, I pass it to Ms. Hager.
All right, there we go. Good evening, Chair Rogers, board members, Dr. Lewis, and DPS community. Administration presents for first reading a draft of Policy 7502, Salary Administration and Employee Compensation. This policy is designed to align with and implement Policy 7501, Governing Principles for Salary Administration. The board set forth the following as its guiding principles: competitive compensation, fair placement, equitable administration, and recognition of relevant experience. The Salary Administration Working Group, which was made up of various DPS employees, included both certified and classified staff from across the district. included both certified and classified staff from across the district. We convened in May of 2024 to begin reviewing other exemplar policies across the state, one of which included Winston-Salem Fortsite School District in an effort to obtain feedback from across DPS. We're also working collaboratively with OPA to provide an opportunity for all DPS staff to review the draft document and provide feedback. So this policy is for first reading that we're bringing to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Byer, is there more to add or? Okay, we'll go to Ms. Byer.
I'm happy to yield to others, I just didn't. Yeah? Did I miss somebody?
Yeah.
Okay. So I want to thank you all for all the work on this. I can look at it and tell that it has been really deep, thoughtful work and that you have included a lot of district educators and staff at the table and in these conversations. You've, the definitions are so strong. And I think these are things that will be critical as we continue to work forward and be clear about what all of, you know, what extra duty is, what extended employment is, some things that are critical for us to clarify moving forward. There's sometimes in here, and I don't know if I'm asking you or you, Dr. Giovanni, there's italics in here on number 10. Is that supposed to be there? Does that mean something extra? Extra duty refers to work sign. I mean, is that just formatting kind of thing?
It's just formatting, but it's also still a working document. It's still in process. We're still working as a working group to, as we gather feedback from other DPS employees regarding the policy. So it is still much a work in progress. This is the first reading and we're expecting it may go to a second and/or third reading.
Great. And I appreciate you, you working with the Office of Public Affairs to get more feedback and put it in a way that folks can access it from work or from home to get, share their voices and ideas with us. Did I or did I not see that extra duty pay and some of these payments need prior approval of a supervisor? I was looking for that, but I'm not sure that I saw it. Was it in there?
That is correct. So extra duty, which is something we've been grappling with to get some parameters around it and making sure we've got a solid process and policy around that. And so it would require prior approval. That is one of the recommendations that's coming forward from the working group.
Okay, good, good.
That's on page three, section B.
My version doesn't even have page numbers. Must be approved by, says it, Superintendent Designee either on an ad hoc basis or as part of the... That, when you see it? Oh, did? But is that
Must be approved by the supporter, must be supported by the employee supervisor and document it in a form developed by the Superintendent Designee. The stipend request form must, submitted by the supervisor must be reviewed and signed off by the Finance Department for confirmation that funds are available for this purpose and for the designation of, designation of the proposed funding sources. Two, the stipend request must be reviewed and approved by Superintendent Designee with or without modifications. And three, the stipend request must be approved by Superintendent Designee either on an ad hoc basis or as part of a board approved schedule for extra duty pay that applies to eligible employees in the same position classification.
I guess I was looking for more explicit that it had to be approved in advance? Because I think that was on the form in the past, but not necessarily the DPS practice. That, that, because I had heard that a lot of these were finding their way up to Cabinet during the freeze and they were supposed to have been approved in advance, but they weren't. The work had already gone on. And then the district was stuck with needing to pay folks to honor that, that. So anyway, that was just one question I had for y'all to consider. And I don't know the answer, I just raised it.
I would just share that that is a, we are working on an extra duty schedule. And so that, as we discussed, it's very difficult for staff in the district to budget if you don't know kind of where that's going to land. So that is something that we do anticipate finalizing with Ms. Hager and Mr. Teeter, kind of working on that and bringing it to Dr. Lewis and Cabinet to review. And it would be posted on, once it's approved by Dr. Lewis and he discusses it with the board, it would be something we would post on the website so that people would understand what those extra duty schedules, like what those amounts are. But that is still, again, a work in progress.
Thank you. And then I don't see, unless I've missed it, a definition for legacy, what some people's checks say that we're, the wording we're using now? Is there a reason that y'all didn't include that? Or is it, I don't?
We'll probably need to add that one. That is a very popular question that we get asked all the time. And so as we build this out and build a definition, things like hold harmless, legacy pay, those sorts of things, we will make sure that those are added in so that folks know what they are.
Thank you all. Thanks so much for reading.
Mr. Tab, and then Ms. Umstead, and then Ms. Carda Atten.
Thank you very much. On number 10, where it says extra duty, and it says extra duty is an additional duty that is distinct from the staff member's main job responsibility? In a job description, are there points where it does not become the main responsibility? Because there, if you look at job descriptions, there's a lot there about job description. So when you're asking about main, it's just that word there that I want clarity in what is considered main. The second thing is in number 11, extended employment, it says it's a 10 or 11-month member works additional months. Does that exclude working additional hours?
Got it, we will take that question.
Thank you.
Mr. Tab, thank you.
Ms. Umstead?
I think there are some, first of all, thank y'all. I know this committee's been working for a little bit on this process, maybe almost a year or six months at least. So thank y'all for all the work. I think this maybe is aligned with Mr. Tab's question, but questions around overtime, like I know that certain employees can receive overtime, certain employees do not receive overtime. And it says for me to go to the Fair Labor Standard Act to figure that out, if I'm reading it. And so I'm wondering if in here, can we be more clear about distinguishing who qualifies, who does not qualify for overtime? And maybe that's also something that's in the job descri, or your, kind of Apple track that kind of thing as well, just so we're really clear, so I don't have to go look. So that was one of the things that I saw that I thought would be helpful for that. And then I think Byer's point around the stipends or extra duty, I wonder if there's also just an explicit line around this being paid? Like this, your, your thing has to be approved before you can, like your submission needs to come back to you approved before you begin the work or something along those lines so that it's clear around what is extra duty, what's not, who's going to get it, who's not? Like that kind of tying that in. Because I might think I'm going to get it, but it's actually like, actually, no, you don't qualify for this because of X, Y, Z or this, Y, that. So how do we get that kind of full loop in this as well?
And we did get some feedback on that from Dr. King. It had already been submitted and we were going over it with him. And so a lot of these positions with the extra duty, these exempt positions are in his shop. So he is working with Ms. Hager and Mr. Teeter on clarifying that. Thank you for the feedback. I'm, we're taking the notes.
And then one, there, sorry, there's also a couple of links in here that aren't open links. So just so y'all both know, in the draft, there's some links in there that aren't open, so you can't get to whatever is next. But I also, it wasn't clear to me how people are placed on the current salary scales that we have that have this range. And that part didn't feel like it was clearly spelled out here. And I want to know if that was maybe intentional or if that's something we're going to keep working on. But our current salary skills have a range inside of a... I don't know that I'm in this though.
Okay.
Per se. But if I, let me go look it up now. But if the salary schedules that we adopted had used one step one, but there was a range for this step. And how do employees know where they're getting placed in that range? And how can I move within that range?
And we've noted
Or can I move within that range?
Right, and we've noted that, so they're still, they're, they're placed based on their experience. And so we'll build that out and make sure it's explicit. And so part of this, trying to have a robust plan, a policy around this so folks can go to the Salary Administration policy, understand what, how Durham Public Schools assigns a staff, you know, assigns their salary. They see themselves and that sort of thing. They know what extra duty is, they know the rules and all of that. And so having this really will help folks be more, have a better sense of what salary placement means here in Durham. Building out the job descriptions is going to be really important. I think it goes back to Mr. Tab's point about understanding, you know, other duties as assigned and those sorts of things. So really building it out, following, you know, the last several years with all the conversations that we've had around compensation, we want to make sure that this policy, that we take our time, get it done, get it done right, receive feedback, receive feedback from other staff and from everyone. So we're really hoping to, and Mr. Teeter and I are working together, so.
Ms. Carda Atten, or Ms. Umstead, were you finished?
Yeah, I just want to make sure my question made sense though around the Thank you. Figure, around the, like the men max piece. That's what it's called, not, it's not arranged, it's called the men, we have men's, we have maxes for each. Yeah, it's online. The salary schedules we approved, oh, sorry, Jessica's got it. There's men's and there's maxes for each place you could be. And how do we know where I fall? Like, I know that my, my previous work history will be in there, but what other factors might consider where I fall in that men in the max? And can I move within that men in the max? That seems like I could, but how?
I, we will take that question back to the working group. And it may be, as we continue to work through this, as, that we also would develop some, you know, procedures, et cetera, that would, where that may be included. But we will take that back to the working group and when we bring it back. And as Ms. Hager indicated, you know, this is a big policy and this is very critical to our staff, that this be right, right, and clear. And so, you know, this is not something we're going to be like, you know, second reading and that's it. You know, I mean, however many readings it takes for this board and the community to be clear and comfortable with this, we are willing to continue this work. And the working group has been very committed to these meetings as well. I don't even know how many, I mean, it's been over, we had multiple meetings in a month even. So it wasn't just once a month, it was sometimes every week and then every other week. And so it's been a lot of work and they've been really committed and folks are really working hard. Thank you.
Carda Atten?
I had, my main question was the same and just the desire to like connect this to the salary schedules, both for us so that we are clear on what we are approving when we approve it and feel good about it and so that our staff can connect the two. And I guess my other question is eventually, and I think you were referencing this, but eventually, I like for it to live in policy, but will we have something on our website where it's easy to access all the information when you're newly hired or if you're an employee? So you can be like, that's where I fall, that's how salaries are administered. I don't have to dig through a really long policy. If I want more information, I go to the long policy, but, okay. And then this
That's for the people that couldn't see it. Ms. Hager is nodding her head affirmatively, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hager.
Yes.
And then I, this feels like such a big policy, both in the size of the policy and the importance. We've talked about it so much over the past year in board meetings, about how it was important for us to get this right. And y'all have been meeting, it sounds like, a lot to work on this. I wonder in the next time that it comes to the board, would it be reasonable to have some slides that kind of outline like, here's some decisions that were made and here's why, or highlight?
It appears there was a technical glitch with board docs, which we've had. You know, I mean, it is, it happens with technology. So Ms. Smith did submit them and like some people are able to access the PowerPoint and others are not. So I'm a not, but other people, I mean, she sent me a screenshot, like she can see it and Ms. Cooper's nodding, like there's certain people can get it. So there was a PowerPoint because it is so big. And that was the feedback that we got from some other folks that we needed a PowerPoint because it is so large. So I apologize, I think that, I don't know if you're refreshing it, I don't know, really. I refreshed and wasn't able to get it, but I do, it was, it's a technical issue. It was not a staff issue, is what I would say.
Thank you. Yeah, just because it's so medium, like if I could just have y'all walk me through some of the like really important pieces so that we don't miss the why behind them and the things we need to be thinking through.
Try refreshing again.
Try refreshing again.
I refreshed and I got it, but, so, okay.
All right, other, other questions? Mr. Tab? Yeah?
Thank you. One of the things that I do not see in the policy is about emergency approvals. And a lot of times, directors and people over programs have to make decisions immediately. And they, they don't get prior approval, but there needs to be somewhere where they can say this is an emergency. This happens a lot, okay?
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
I will add my thoughts. I also think it's great that you add legacy pay and hold harmless, since those terms come up a lot. I'm glad Ms. Umstead brought up the men's and maxes because I don't, I think they're very subjective. So it would be very helpful to know what our rubric is for using them. We agreed to use the men's in the fall. But for, for staff going forward, not from staff coming in from last spring, but if we're, I don't know that I'm in favor. Maybe that's a salary, that salary schedule conversation. I kind of like when we just landed on one, you know, with the steps. But definitely if we're going to still use those and there's some way to determine how people fall, otherwise I think it can be very subjective. You know, you're, some, your supervisor sees that, you know, you doing these things, but what if your supervisor doesn't see you doing all these, you know, things, excelling at your job or whatever? So in any case, there's that. And then also, I just, I wanted to say, as part of the Operations Agenda Review Group, I did get a peek at the document that you all are creating around extra duty pay roles. I think that's excellent. I love how clear it is. And I just wanted to ask, I think you probably won't be finished with it for next meeting, but what is the timeline on rolling that out? Is like, is it next school year, going into next school year? Because I think it's really nice for everybody to see, if I do this, this is what I would get. And if somebody else is getting more extra duty pay, here's why, it's already been calculated. So what's the timeline on, on that? Or is that unknown?
I, I think it is unknown, but what I can say is that the urgency around this policy is not lost on us. Certain board members did share with us that it was important that this policy come and to start moving forward and getting feedback from board members and the community. And so as Ms. Hager indicated, you know, it is still a work in progress. And, you know, with Dr. Lewis's And, you know, with Dr. Lewis's permission, I'm happy to just consider this kind of like an informational rollout and then come back at the work session in March, or not the work, whenever y'all instruct us to come back with the PowerPoint and these answers to these questions, so that you don't feel any pressure that, oh, this is a second reading and we have to be there since we weren't able to access the PowerPoint in advance. I'm happy to, whatever the board's pleasure and Dr. Lewis's permission is.
Ms. Amstead, thought on that?
Um, I'm maybe say the work session on the, I guess, March 7th. Because my other question or thought and happy to hear from the other board members, if we had an opportunity, and there's a, the salary, the group that's working on this is a cross-section of educators, but I would love for all of our folks to have some eyes on this. Um, if we can schedule meetings with Durham Association of Educators and get their feedback. And so I think that'd be an important other step because this policy is so important. I think understanding what clarity is really vital for this. And also, you know, I know we've all gave you some feedback already to figure out, but I would love to know how our staff, when they read this draft, how they interpret it. And that might help us see if there are any gaps as well.
I'm happy to work with Ms. Cooper, um, and tap into her expertise and experience with making sure that the right groups, obviously with Dr. Lewis's approval, um, are involved. And once we kind of address some of these preliminary feedback, tighten up the policy, you know, and then, um, tweak the PowerPoint and then kind of work with, um, public, public affairs on getting that out and getting Dr. Lewis's guidance on who those groups would be. So did you, did I hear and did we have consensus on March 7th work session, not February 20th?
No, we won't be here on March 7th. The work session's March 13th, so I want to make sure that's clear for the listeners, March 13th, yes.
Is that okay, board members? Okay, all right, yep. Okay, Ms. Byer?
Thank you. Um, I noticed when I go to the classified salary schedules that they say at the top, this is the language we put in at the top, and I don't know if it's in the, this draft or not, or whether it should be. Each year, the board may grant salary increases as a part of the annual budget process contingent upon state and local funding. Um, I'm pretty sure we have the, the. The gist of that, yes, that's the word I was looking for. But I, I don't know if we want to be explicit and if we do, if we want to mirror that language in both places. I'm sure y'all have thought about that.
I'm looking at our CFO and HR folks and they're again, nodding. So did y'all want to add anything or any?
No, I think that, that's incredibly important. So as we, particularly as we go through this budget process, we'll be trying to forecast how much of a state raise might we expect. Um, and, and it's possible we won't know what that is until after the county has authorized our funding. And that's just the reality we've had. So I think that language is especially critical, uh, with the disconnect that we have with the state's delayed timeline and what we follow locally, um, not just in Durham, but in other counties.
Yeah, and I think I was also reminded of it with, you know, the discussion, Ms. Chavez, of the men's and maxes. Everyone would love to, I would love max, I don't, but we have to make the math work, right? The, the math and the budget has to work for us to be able to maximize what we can do for, for our staff and, um, it, it, yeah, and we'll, we'll continue to advocate to the state and we'll continue to advocate for the Federal Department of Education to still exist for our students and our staff going forward. But, yeah, and, thank you.
Ms. Amstead?
All right, it's my last thing on this. I think the, there's a question of when you move from the men and max, but then in the way the draft policy says is you get an experience increase, which I would assume that might be from the step to step, but that's not explicit. So the question of how do I move from a men, how do I move in the men and max? And then how would I move from a step to step? Would be both, we need both of that clarity.
Got it.
All right. Colleagues, um, seeing no further points of discussion. Um, thank you for this good work. And now we will move to operations services. Again, a 30-minute slot. Um, and we have a transfer sa- transportation services update, uh, with Mr. Webb. I'm sorry, Dr. Webb.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, good evening, board members and colleagues. Happy to present to you tonight, uh, transportation update with some good news. And, uh, I'll say that again, there's some good news. Um, I understand. And, and here it you will, Mr. Tab. Um, so I want to say that Mr. Barnes and his team have really stepped on the gas and accelerated through this process. See what I did there? Um, so next slide, please. And next slide, please. So a brief update on our progress on the family responsibility zones are in, uh, in effect. Uh, here's our progress, February 6th is day 10, today is day 10 of FRZ's implementation. Um, the FRZ background and FAQs are online. Um, and we just recently, we, uh, presented to you the retention and recruitment plan at our last get-together. Uh, we also, uh, Ms. Hager and I tag teamed again and presented that to all of our principals this week at our, uh, leadership meeting. Next slide, please. Uh, something we worked for, for some time. Uh, rotational coverage ended on Friday, the 17th of 2025, January 20th, January 17th, 2025. On day one, and I can give you incidental data about the rest of the days, but it, it look, it looks a lot like this. 25 drivers called out and four transportation safety assessments called out for the morning shift, 32 called out and, uh, drivers called out and four TSA's calling in afternoon. As was our plan, we're moving away from, uh, from rotational coverage, these absences were covered by members and employees of the transportation department. On day one, all buses ran, all routes were covered, and every day since. So, uh, everybody is working and working overtime and pitching in. Uh, it says all routes were completely covered on day one, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Everything is going very well. So there's your good news, Mr. Tab, thank you, sir. Uh, and kudos to the transportation department, Mr. Barnes and his group, and our, uh, Durham Public Schools employees who have a CDL with a passenger endorsement, who have agreed to join us in our endeavors, more to come there in a second. Next slide and the next slide after that. The rider ship and routing updates. Um, bus routes have been modified for effective operation. That's going to be, you're going to hear this a lot, that is an ongoing non-stop process, we'll continue that. New riders in this process, even though the buses have been running, new riders have been added to existing routes. Routing modification improvement is an ongoing and ever-changing activity. Next slide, please, implementation of FRZs. So after one and a half weeks of implementation, uh, implementation, and I want to share this, uh, information from, um, Ms. Brookshire, uh, that she has shared with me. Over the last week and a half, our staff has observed dismissal at at least nine elementary schools, prioritizing the school with the largest number of students who have previously requested bus service from within the FRZs. Staff continues to follow up with remaining schools to see if they would like a site visit to discuss concerns for supporting families or choosing walking or biking, biking. Observations and conversations with administrators and staff. There has not been a large increase in the number of students walking and there are no safety concerns with car, car rider lines. More families are carpooling and kids are getting to school. Uh, school administrators have been working, and kudos to our school-level administrative staff, they are working through problems individually. And we, and we talked in previous meetings, um, this is where they really, uh, the, the rubber meets the road. There's, see what I did there again? Um, that our, our principals and school staff are working with our parents. Um, and, and we've not had since implementation, any appeals, anything that have come to, um, Mr. Barnes or his staff, uh, to, in regards to additional, um, additional, uh, service requests. Uh, wanted to note that we did have, um, we are working with our, our families at Hope Valley to resolve some issues resolving, uh, around, circulating around some sidewalk issues and concerns about, uh, construction and ongoing construction. So those buses are running until this is complete. So, uh, other than that, we received zero appeals since the FRZ implementation. Um, I want to point out too that, uh, Ms. Brookshire and her team are not sitting around and waiting for problems. They're reaching out to the schools, they're reaching out to the principals, and they're visiting to try to, um, to help with that, uh, and anticipate any problems, not just waiting to be called upon. Uh, say, uh, so site visits and communications and with staff and families will continue. Uh, information here about safe routes to school support with several links. Um, uh, and then, uh, want to point out that Bike and Roll to School Day is scheduled for May 7th, 2025. Uh, there are upcoming conversations about infrastructure improvements in our community and the role of crossing guards. Next slide, please, driver retention, recruitment and support. And we've got that in the right order, retention is the new recruitment. Next slide, please. So I apologize, I have a typo, I'd like to correct that now. That is incorrect, there are not 13 new drivers, there are 15 new drivers. We continue to grow, uh, with potential as many as four coming in the next week to two. The team is working overtime to get this, this, um, this taken care of. I would, I'd like to define that for you. 15 new drivers since January 3rd, nine are current DPS employees, six are new to DPS. They are all either driving or available to drive as needed. They're all approved to work with us in a driver capacity. Four of them are on the road and training with veteran drivers. Two have been assigned to division to be given permanent routes. The remaining drivers are, of that number are back, are on the road and signed a route. Um, this does not include transportation safety assistants, previously known as bus monitors. Next slide, please. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Uh, because we don't have a, we've not been at it a long time, we don't have a lot of data for you, but I wanted to share what we had. Discussion.
Thank you, colleagues. I'd like to organize this discussion just a little bit. We have an opportunity to ask questions of Dr. Webb and transportation team now, but then we need to have a little bit more conversation about next steps on advocacy, uh, with the city and county and our joint city-county, um, meeting on the 11th. But I'd like us to direct our questions right now to Dr. Webb, so he doesn't have to stand through that whole discussion. Mr. Tab?
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for the great news. Um, but I do want to ask you about the crossing guards. Uh, it's on the slide, but it's just there as the role of the, the role of the crossing guard, but that's it. Where are we in terms of making sure that crossing guards?
I'm sorry. Okay, um, okay. Nope. Dr. Webb, go ahead and answer his question.
Thank you, Mr. Tab. Uh, so I understand there's a discussion on that forthcoming. From our perspective, um, we shared with the board, uh, last week and then again today, so it would be at the top of the list, the complete list of where crossing guards exist. And that is not the purview of Durham Public Schools, that is decided by, uh, the, the city. That is, and, and where they go and what we're, what we want to do moving forward is a topic for discussion. At this point, uh, there has, other than communicating, hey, we would really like to have more crossing guards, um, there's not been an initiative from our perspective, um, trying to work with, uh, with what we have and answering questions related to that. Durham Public Schools does not have the ability to add crossing guards. But I believe where Chair Rogers is going in later conversation is going to be discussing options for pursuing that. So that has not been our focus thus far.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Um, for clarity, Mr. Tab. Last week, Dr. Webb shared with some members of the board a document from 2014, um, from the Durham Police Department to reflect where they knew crossing guards were in place. That was shared with the full board via email earlier this afternoon. In addition, um, in our leadership circles, Ms. Carter-Atten and myself have discussed this with, uh, Mayor, Mayor Proton, as well as the Chair and Vice Chair of the County Commission. Dr. Lewis has also had conversations and requests with the city manager around, um, crossing guards and what next steps are and how we can get support from the city and the county, our county counterparts. So that work has happened in advocacy spaces that we're already, that we actively have conversation and connection in. We realize that the document from 2014 is not necessarily reflective of where crossing guards are right now, or the needs of the district for crossing guards. There were lots of schools that weren't built then. You know, we have many different needs now, more students, different students, all the things. And so I would like us as a board to take that document and ask if there's any ability for the city to help us by sharing some of the protocols for their training, how, uh, volunteers and other members of our community can act, actively become crossing guards, where the rates or pay are, how we can actively, you know, work together to recruit the crossing guards that we need in the district. Um, I'd like us to have a conversation about how we can get more crosswalks and bus shelters at our schools, so that families can rely on those other transportation, um, methods of transportation and not just DPS busing. So that we are having conversations about, right now while we're in budget season, asking the city and the county to help us by improving infrastructure around our schools and improving, um, the number of crossing guards that we have available to support around schools. But again, like Dr. Webb said, it has to be through, they have to be trained by the Durham Police Department and they don't, they wouldn't work for DPS.
I'd like to respond to that, just in future, if we are going to put family responsibility zones in place, then there should have been prior conversation about crossing guards and how it works, so that all of, all, all of it would be together as opposed to, some people may be saying now, we have the, the responsibility zones, family responsibility zones, but we don't have crossing guards. So I don't know in the last report if that's, you know, if we have enough or we don't have enough, because I haven't seen that.
Right, no, I understand.
But I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward and do, you know, just maybe to Dr. Lewis, if we're going to put things in place, I would really like for us to make sure that all of those, you know, things are in place, that is going to make a difference whether or not someone feels safe or not, because they're now involved in the, in the walk, well, I don't want to say walking.
It's a family responsibility. Well, the good thing is that we've already activated family responsibility zones. And so hopefully we wouldn't have to do that, and they're already active, so we don't have to activate them again. But if, go ahead.
No, I was just going to add, if you recall, uh, when Mr. Palmer was here, he shared that, um, a significant number of families were removed from the family responsibility zones due to some safety concerns, um, like not having a crossing guard at a certain location. So that was considered, but I definitely hear you in terms of, uh, what we can do to make sure that, um, you know, we could really look at crossing guards. And that was one of the things too, I was, um, I wanted to just bring out again, and it's a link in the presentation to the 21 schools that are part of the family responsibility zones. Um, definitely appreciative of the community members that are stepping up and wanting to assist. Uh, but I think there has been some misconceptions that, uh, family responsibility zones were impacting all of our schools, all elementary schools, but it's 21 elementary schools and no secondary schools.
Ms. Amstead?
I just had a follow-up question, this, uh, the school crossing guard locations, um, the document you said was from 2014, is there an updated document somewhere? Or like, truly, we haven't touched where crossing guards are since 2014? Or like, truly, we haven't touched where crossing guards are since 2014?
That is the most recent document, um, that, and Ms. Brookshire has been working very closely with, uh, with, uh, several organizations to talk about just those, those questions, including Mr. Tab's question. Prior to implementation, we had some conversation about, so, uh, Ms. Brookshire, would you come join us? And, and give us some perspective on that.
Good evening, thank you. Um, the document that was shared from 2014, those are all still the existing crossing guard locations. So 15 crossing guards at 13 DPS schools, all elementary schools except for Brogdon. There's a crossing guard at, at Duke and Leon Street for Brogdon Middle School. Um, so the, I know it's alarming to see 2014, but they have been unchanged. And so I think it's a worthy conversation about how we can revisit those locations in partnership with the police department and how we prioritize new requests for crossing guards and revisit existing ones. Um, the city, uh, the Sergeant over the crossing guard program actually let me know today that they have reposted the crossing guard job posting, um, but that's to fill one existing vacancy. That's, um, one of those 15 positions now. Um, but they are leaving it open because they're hoping to build the applicant pool so that they can continually receive applicants. So it won't just close in two weeks, so.
Was there a follow-up or? Do we have like an MOU around the crossing guard with the city? I just think like, some way that we decide how we want to engage and interact with each other, which includes a review of the crossing guards every however many years, I think would be helpful. Um, and then how the sites are determined might be a good part of that kind of conversation too. I just feel like this is a, a, a place where we need more collaboration, especially as our city continues to grow so much. Uh, new, I mean, who knows how many new neighborhoods were built since 2014? And how many different students are trying to interact with schools. So I, I think that might be something worth us considering. And I, I do, I know we talked a little bit about crossing guards really early in this conversation and, um, there's still more work to be done around that for sure. So, thank you.
Ms. Byer. So I think this update was great to hear that we have more drivers. I want to extend gratitude to, um, you, Dr. Webb, um, you, Ms. Brookshire, uh, Mr. Barnes, Joe Harris, Annie Fullwood, our whole team. And most especially to our drivers who drive each and every day with, um, our precious students. Um, I do, I was glad when the students came to speak to us about, um, climate and sustainability that we can, um, be proud that Ms. Brookshire is with us, that safe routes to school is something that we have prioritized in our community, um, and it is here to stay and perhaps probably grow. So I would, if at all possible, like us to go into that conversations with the information about where our most critical needs for crossing guards are, um, so that we have a prioritized sense of, and able to tell the city, Hope Valley, or whatever, that we're, that, and that we have, you know, logic behind it. I do see the crossing guard posted. For anyone that's looking, it is in the salary range of $18.19 an hour to $20.47 on the city website and open, um, as of two days ago. So, um, but that's, that's not a, yeah, that's not a new one. That's existing and, um, I mean, replacing an existing one. Do you all feel like you have that data? I know the city also has transportation staff. And have y'all, are they receptive to those conversations about where these might be, needed to be added most rapidly?
Absolutely. So, um, one thing that I've been in conversation with the city transportation department, so crossing guards are also a hard-to-fill position, just like bus drivers and some of the other positions within our school system. Um, and so the city of Durham has said that they're open to exploring other methods for hiring crossing guards, whether that's contracting them out. There's a few other cities in the state where we have examples how that's done. Um, and so, in preparing for that possibility, they did ask us what would be the next ones on the list. And that's not, that's from what we know in reviewing the zones, what we've heard from families. This isn't the first year that people have found their way to one of, one or more of the DPS departments and asked about crossing guards. So, um, we've shared that with them, Hope Valley being the number one, and then others, and also in coordination with the police department, which are the locations that might need reinforcement coming up. So, they have that list and I can share that with you all as well, but that's been part of the conversation with the transportation department. But right now, crossing guards live with the police department, the operation of the program.
So they have the list about which ones we need next?
Mm-hmm. It's not set in stone, but it was, we were asked if they were to explore it, what would be another 10? But that's not set in stone, so we can, there can be more back and forth on that, and hopefully that would be part of the conversation that you all have. That was just an estimate of what that would look like, um, to explore that.
I think, I would love to have that conversation, especially as they go into their budget cycle and, and plan with us. I, I see them being great partners in this. Also was thinking about how the county and city have gone to using a lot of private contractors for security, like some Nighthawk or something screening. And I wonder if some of those folks might be able to be trained and, and, um, able to perform this job. I, I was looking at Board Member Rogers and she made a face, so it made me think that I made a mistake.
What Ms. Brookshire was just sharing. Um, my follow-up was, is administration prepared with that information to take on the 11th? Will y'all be able to bring that, or do you expect the board to take it? The list of 10 priorities that you've already shared?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I will say typically, it's, it's, it's not just a matter of, of us taking a list to the city. There's some criteria that they use, a number of students, the miles per hour, the volume of traffic, the gaps per hour, um, that, that normally goes into play before they assign a crossing guard. I just want to make that clear. And also typically, the city funds crossing guards. And so if we have schools in the county, we'll need to be prepared for that conversation as well.
Dr. Giovanni, you're going to add something?
I did just want to add, um, that a lot of the work that we are doing in Durham is extremely innovative. And, um, I think, thank you, Ms. Byer, for listing the names of the people, but you did forget a name. Um, Matthew Palmer is the one that got us here. Like, we stand on the work that he did do and also, um, folks from all around the country have reached out to us about the different things we were doing. Like, they were in the same situation we are in, in that rotational coverage that got us through. None of us liked it. But folks from around the country reaching out to Matthew, asking him like, how you did that, what do the logistics look like? Same with the FRZs. And, um, I think that, you know, when you're just working, so I just wanted to point that out and, uh, lift that up. And also, um, you know, whenever you name people, it's always dangerous, right? Because then you forget people. So, uh, charge it to, um, my head, not my heart, but I want to mention our bus driver mechanics. And our folks that, I mean, they are up early, like those buses break down, they make sure they're running, they make sure the brakes are safe. So, they are an integral part of getting our kids to school. And I mean, and of course I'm doing this, and I've always feel like you're leaving out, you know, teachers, child nutrition workers. So I don't want, that's not my intention, but I do just want to lift up, since we're talking about transportation, uh, just the work that, you know, we thank Mr. Barnes for being here. And I just want to make sure we, um, don't neglect to thank Matthew, um, Palmer and, of course, all the other team, uh, members of his team, uh, that have gotten us here. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, that catch. Thank you. That is well-deserved. Thank you. No. Dr. Webb, you wanted to add something?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, I'd like, uh, if you would indulge me before you move into that level of conversation on that topic. Um, I would like for clarity to read the FRZs. And I'd like to point out that these are elementary schools. There are no middle schools that are FRZs. There are no high schools that are FRZs. For, for those who are concerned and, and, and not been, not able to determine if they're affected or not, I would like to publicly share that list. Again, Burton Elementary, Club Boulevard Elementary, Creekside Elementary, Eastway Elementary, Fayetteville Street Elementary, Forest View Elementary, Aron Harris Elementary, Hillendale Elementary, Holt Elementary, Hope Valley Elementary, Lakewood Elementary, Moorhead Montessori, Murray Massenberg Elementary, Parkwood Elementary, Pearson Town Elementary, E.K. Poe Elementary, Southwest Elementary, Sandy Ridge Elementary, Y.E. Smith Elementary, C.C. Spaulding Elementary, and George Watts Elementary. And those are our FRZs, and that is where we are today. So I wanted to, to share that, so everyone heard that again, so there, to maybe allay some concerns. That's where we are today. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, a quick, yeah.
I also share with Dr. Lewis, if we could somehow get a, get the list out there that for the schools that are not affected as well, I know we have a list out there for the schools. Dr. Lewis and I talked about that. And make sure both lists are out there so people can make sure they know who, which schools are really in it and which ones are not. Yes. Because that's where the confusion has come as well. They hear the, they hear the names of the schools and they think that they are affect, you know, affected by it.
I just want to be clear, the list that he read are the schools that are impacted.
Right.
So if he, if you didn't hear your school name, you're not impacted. But you're saying, on that, on a, on a web pa, on the webpage, you want to list the schools that are not?
Yeah, I think it's important for them to see all, see the schools and they can look and see, you know, which ones, you know, are impacted by it and which ones are not.
Ms. Byer. Uh, I hear that. I just wonder if that might actually cause more confusion or a false sense that they might not be considered in the future as transportation needs to look at middle schools or high schools in the future. I just don't want us to inadvertently cause, yeah, I just welcome staff thinking about that. Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Maybe that's just the educator in me saying that, be very clear. That's all. We can be very clear, and the clearer we are, the better things can be.
Maybe something to consider, administration. Um, Ms. Amstead, did you have questions? Okay, Ms. Carter Otten.
Um, the one thing, I appreciate the request for clarity and making sure our families have, um, good information. I did like that on the website, when you click on the, when it shows you which school, but also you click on the link and it shows you the map to show you exactly, like, where. And I thought that was clear in addition to communicating directly with all the families impacted. So thank you for, um, doing that. Super excited about the positive, um, news that you shared with us tonight. Thank you for all of the work that's been done from the teams and for sharing that with us. Thanks for being proactive too about, I'd asked about like how you're gathering data on like how things are going. And I appreciate that y'all are going out to school. You're not just waiting to hear if something bad happens. You're going out and talking to school administrators and folks', um, families. So that's, um, great to hear. And, um, glad to hear we haven't had any appeals yet, and I'm curious to know how that will continue moving forward. Maybe that's because there were some changes made in response to some sa, safety concerns. So, that's good news so far. Um, are we holding off on talking about crossing guards more or? Okay.
If I may, Ms. Carter. Um, additionally, we have started a, to track, we have a document, it's empty right now, but it will track those requests and the outcome. So periodically, if, as we can report back to this board, if that's what you're interested in, we had three requests, two regret, whatever the dynamic is there. Um, but our, our team has established a, a shared document where that information will be easily accessible moving forward. But you're correct, we're, right now it's an empty list. I'm sorry, we now have one. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Hope Valley, well, Hope Valley concerns have, yes, we, I mentioned that. Aside from those, but those are kind of far-reaching right now. So we're trying to work through that. Thanks, Ms. Barnes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Amstead.
Yeah, I was really excited about the bus driver, um, updates as well, and thank y'all all for your work in recruiting folks to drive. Um, can we, well, two questions. On the express stops, the public comment was asked earlier today around when, where are we doing that for next year? And can we just get some clarity on where we are or, or when we'll get a follow-up on where that is at a, a upcoming meeting if we need to?
Yes, ma'am.
Head nod, so we'll get some updates at a future meeting on if we need to implement express stops in the future. Okay, that's, thank you. Um, the second question was about crossing guards. You want me to wait, Ms. Rogers? Uh, all right. Um, all the schools I believe right now that we're looking at FRZs are in the city. Do we evaluate our count, our schools in the county too around needs of crossing guards? That might be a Ms. Brookshire question. I think they all are in the city.
I think that came up in a previous board meeting, and it's a good question. Um, right now, I'm looking at the list. I don't think any that have key crossings that are not within the city, but it would be good to have that answer for the future. Um, I really did appreciate Dr. Lewis mentioning previously about the importance of a data-driven process. I want to step back just a, one step and make it sound like, we don't just have a list that we can pass to the city, but in partnership with transportation staff at the city, looking for solutions that could be quick response. That doesn't take the place of a longer data, I mean, you have to collect traffic data, observe students crossing. We have new traffic patterns now that we have family responsibility zones in effect. So, people are coming, you know, travel behaviors are changing. So this, you know, going forward, this is a good time to collect data, to be making those, those informed decisions. So, the list that was provided that we will still pass on was in partnership of quick response. Like, what could we do if we can move quickly on something? So, that doesn't take the place of a longer process.
Yes, I'm wondering, what does it look like to do any of those evaluations for schools that are in the county technically and aren't city? And I don't, I don't actually know jurisdiction-wise if we, um, yes, I see a yes in the audience, so we do have schools that are just county and not city. And so, is there a valuation for us as a district to be thinking of? Or, I don't even know who on the county side would manage some of that traffic pieces, but, yeah.
So if the role of a crossing guard, and maybe this can be part of your conversation with the multi-party, uh, the joint meeting that's coming up?
Our, our conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be there.
Yeah, um, yeah, your conversation. Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah. Um, sorry. Um, but the role, like what does Durham see as the role of a crossing guard? So you're asking about the county and many of the schools that are, and there aren't many, but truly within the county, they weren't included in the family responsibility zone analysis, or they were at the very beginning and then set aside because right out the front door, there's a transportation safety barrier. Um, and so if the role of a crossing guard is to help, it's not to control traffic. It's to help students walk and bike across a crosswalk or an intersection. So, um, and at what point do infrastructure improvements supersede that and say it's the best designed intersection ever? We don't need a crossing guard. Or do we always need a crossing guard because we want that person present to be crossing with our students? So that's a community conversation.
Which if a school doesn't have sidewalks or crosswalks or all of that, then they're not even considered.
Start with infrastructure.
But we need to also, that infra, I'm just reiterating the importance of the infrastructure, because I know that some of our schools don't have crosswalks or don't have sidewalks and kids are walking along two-lane streets, right? So how do we, thank you, that was helpful to help reiterate that we need infrastructure and the crossing guard.
Ms. Byer. There's just one quick question, Ms. Brookshire. One of the things in my mind that we were also asking the city's help with was the, getting the GIA, their GIS mapping staff to work on mapping these FRZs. Do you remember that? And, Dr. Webb, do you remember? Our school locator tool that, that families use lives on their website, and I think that was something that Mr. Palmer described previously. That, but that might come up as something that, in that meeting that, um, you all are having with the city and, um, will be cheering you on, um, that we could use their support from their mapping staff as well.
So I apologize, I don't have that information, um, but it is a valid question, and that's something we can follow up on.
All right, and Chair Rogers.
Um, I really appreciate this conversation. I didn't think about a MOU, Ms. Amstead. So I think, um, if we could get some of those details like ironed out and sort of start the preliminary advocacy on that, that could be helpful, especially with bringing in, I know Ms. Brookshire, your planner. I know Ms. Brookshire, your planner, I know. But bringing in the city transportation team to help us do these assessments and let's not be doing them, you know, without them. And so I wonder if all that would be included. I do want to... So I think all of that is great. So what I've heard from the board in terms of our advocacy is, is there an MOU, an appetite for an MOU? How are sites for crossing guards determined? Where are most critical needs and who's doing that assessment and when? And the GIS mapping for family responsibility zones. I did personally think that we should ask for support for rest structures, shelters, at more of our schools. And the sidewalk and crosswalk infrastructure stuff, both from the city and county support. Is there anything else y'all want to add to that list?
Might be nice just to show them pictures of the ones that have been done and the progress that we've made on some of those shelters and things, and what a difference that makes in school aesthetics and safety. Because I think pictures speak well, but I think that's a great idea.
The other, and I think, so if it's okay with y'all, that it would be okay if we asked the city for more frequent bus routes around our schools. I don't know.
I mean, I want to know if our students are riding it. Like, I'm all for increasing routes, but if students aren't riding, an increased route, like, it's, I don't know if we know if that's the barrier.
Yeah. Yeah, I know one of the city council members would like us to, has expressed an interest in asking for that so that they can... It's kind of, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? You increase the routes and then you increase ridership? Or you try to increase ridership and then increase the routes? I'd think it'd be worth a robust discussion together. I don't know the answer. I'm not pulling one way or another.
Ms. Carden.
I think that's a great list. And I would, I'm curious to know what Ms. Brookshire says about those, the city buses and the shelters, because they sound like something that could be really useful. And based on what you know and the research that y'all have done, are those things that you would recommend also?
I think improved transit infrastructure. I mean, that makes it more appealing, more welcoming, more comfortable. So I think asking for support or more information about how those improvements forth, how they're being prioritized going forward. I'll say I know a little bit less on the transit side than I do on the, you know, infrastructure, like, you know, street projects, sidewalk projects, bike lane projects. So I think it's a good question. And I know that, you know, there's a few that are in the queue at our schools that will be updated anytime. Like, we've given, you know, the right-of-way dedication and the construction easements needed for those improvements to happen. But there's others that could be improved as well, so. Thank you.
Ms. Byer. Sorry, I keep thinking it's the last thing. I do think sometimes it's good to take paper. And like, we could take some of these examples of these documents that you have worked on for families about what bus comes near each high school. What are we calling those? Sorry, Ms. Brookshire.
Just call them transit guides.
Transit guides. Like, I think that might be helpful for them to see other things that you all have worked on and at least share some hyperlinks to the robust work that you all, you as one person mostly, on behalf of this big student body, have done. And the other thing I wonder is if we have connectivity between our comprehensive high schools and Durham Tech for, as we look towards future build-out of programming there? Or if that might be something that we need to keep an eye on? But I think this is just the start of the conversation, but I'm so glad you all are having it, yeah. All right. Thank you so very much for all this information.
Thank you. And in closing, even though Dr. Giovanni stole my thunder, I'm very proud of the transportation team and the planning team. And it's a joy to work with professionals. And they are leading with their heart and their head. So very proud of them. Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you. What a nice closing. All right. We will move to our, I believe, final agenda item before we go to closed. Okay, we have just the monthly change order report, which is for information. So we have it there. That was quick. And now I will take a motion. Oh, sorry, sorry. Hold on. Summary of follow-up items. Who am I looking toward? Who should I look to for?
The staff?
Summary of follow-up items.
The staff have been taking extensive notes as the board have been lifting them up. And there are many under everything. I wonder if you want them read into the record or if you trust us to have captured your items? But I'm happy to...
We're gonna, we're gonna trust you this time. And I'm seeing a desire to do that from my board members. So thank you for taking extensive notes and...
Well, we all shared and tag teamed. So hopefully, we've done a good job recommending, capturing the essence. Thank you.
I'm sure you have. Thank you. I'm moved that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved that we go into closed session by Board Member Byer and seconded by Board Member Umstead. Is there any other discussion? All right, everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, use the same sign. And we are now in closed session. As another reminder, we will not come back out after closed session to... We will come back out to close the meeting. But we will not stream so as to let our interpreters and tech staff go home. Thank you.
Can I, since we are not coming back out and we just had a transportation report, just a reminder that next week is School Transportation Appreciation Week. This is Love the Bus Month. So we have many community members and community partners that have stepped up in major ways to just show their support and value for our school bus drivers and safety assistance and monitor. So this is just another plea to the public to celebrate our bus drivers next week and the rest of the year.
Awesome. All right. And with that, we are in closed session.